Well, I got six to five odds.
Well, thank you.
It was a blessing.
No, and you were suffering. Blessing.
Oh, you, sir?
Good. I'm okay.
Kind of bother you?
Nope.
You're fine.
Don't you got a flask down there?
We've got some, uh, Junior men's. We've got a big box of Junior men's.
I'm ready to buy whatever.
Yep.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The hour is seven o'clock. And as Mayor, I hereby call to order this special meeting of the Laconia City Council scheduled for Monday, May 21, 2018 at this hour. We will begin our meeting tonight, as always, with a salute to our American flag. I would ask that you please rise and join Counselor Andrew Hosmer in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll note for the record that the minutes to tonight's meeting are being kept by City Clerk Cheryl Hebert, and I would ask that she please call the roll.
Counselor Cheney?
Present.
Counselor Bowns?
Here.
Counselor Lippman?
Present.
Counselor Haynes?
Here.
Counselor Hamel?
Present.
Counselor Hosmer?
Here.
Mayor Engler?
Present.
Let the rec-- oh, welcome. You snuck in when I wasn't looking. Let the record show that all six counselors are present this evening and that a quorum has been established. Also note for the record that the council is joined at the front table tonight by City Manager Scott Myers and by the City Finance Director Donna Woodeman. So we have only, um, one piece of, uh, official business for tonight's me-- for tonight's special meeting of the council, and that is to, uh, to enjoy department presentations regarding the fiscal 2019 budget, uh, from the school district, the police department, and the fire department in that order. So we'll start off right away with the presentation on the proposed school district budget, uh, by Dr. Minahan. I don't know who else you're gonna have involved in this. I see Christine here.
Probably someone, I would assume, yeah. So, thank you. Thanks for having us tonight. Always a great evening, right? So, tonight, most of the actual money pieces and budget pieces will be done by Christine Bluen, who is our business administrator. But if you have questions of a more academic or co-curricular or facilities nature, you can check in with me or with Ms. Hines on questions related to, like, student services. So, thank you all for having us. Turn it over to Christine.
Thank you. So, as some of you may not know, my name's Christine Bluen. I'm the business administrator for the school district.
Can I get you to closer to the mic, please?
Closer?
Thank you.
Okay. Can everybody hear me okay? Um, so, as you can see from the packet that you all received, there's a lot of information and details regarding our proposal. In an effort to maintain a timely presentation this evening, I'll only be highlighting, um, the major changes throughout the budget. And if you do have any questions, I will be gladly to answer them in the, at the end. Uh, we begin this year with a zero-based budget, meaning we started the process from scratch with team leaders and building-level administrators. We created what we call a needs-based budget. So, basically, they came up with all their needs. They spoke with their building administrator, and then the administrator presented that to, um, myself and the superintendent, assistant superintendent, and we created a budget in that fashion. With the zero-based budget, you will see that there are a lot of variances, um, in requests from year to year, and allocations will occur because of the needs. They may want to reallocate those funds from one account to another account to meet their initiatives that happen at different levels in the, in the different buildings. If we could just begin on page two, um, I'm just gonna go over the revenues first. Again, I'm just gonna highlight the major changes and the difference. The difference is there. The most important information regarding, um, the budget that I'm going to present tonight is this is, in fact, a tax cap-compliant budget that we are presenting. As far as the revenue changes, the first being kindergarten aid of $160,000, which is a new revenue source for school districts beginning next year. This is a, uh, this is to help support full-day kindergarten. The further down under federal, um, revenue from federal sources, we have the infrastructure fund. As you may recall, we came and asked for a supplemental appropriation for this fiscal year to be able to receive those funds from the state to do security upgrades district-wide. So you will see those revenues come in, in next fiscal year, because they're gonna carry over between two. And that there is about four hundred, four, $440,813. This is a one-time revenue source, just so you know. The next is under local revenue. Tuition for adult ed and alt ed is increased by $100,000. The current year that we are in now, we brought back in the alternative education, which was a, in a separate building and its separate program. Because that's now housed in the high school, we have it in our total, in our high school budget. So the increase in expenditures is now offset by the revenues that you'll see in this account. And lastly, the total appropriation at the bottom of $40,332,313 is $65,000 higher than what the city mayor, um, put forth to the city council back in April. This is because the district was in receipt of unanticipated revenues, and we would like to be able to utilize those funds. So in doing so, we would like to ask the city council, as they go through the approval process, to make an amendment to our final gross appropriation of $65,000. And when, just so you know, that this, that means it would be a zero tax impact because we increased our expenditures by $65,000, we also increased our revenues by $65,000. So they negate themselves. There's no impact to the budget. So the total amount that is going to be raised in taxes that was presented would be the same, so no changes. So if you could kindly just keep that in the back of your mind, we'd like to have that amendment be as part of the process as well.
Six-five?
$65,000.
So is this the same $65,000 that was alluded to at previous meetings by the city manager?
Correct. Correct. Yes. Yeah. I've spoken with Mr. Myers.
Do we wanna talk about that now or come back to it?
We can come back to it if we need to.
Okay.
Sure. Feel free to ask questions to Row as well.
Can I ask one? I just, I just... So you're, you're asking for an increase in the appropriation of $65,000?
Correct, 'cause we are also in receipt of additional unanticipated revenues when we set the budget originally of $65,000.
Okay, go ahead.
Counselor Lippman has a question. Before you leave that page, going back to the kindergarten aid, can you talk about, um, the basis of the $160,000? My recollection of what kindergarten aid might be was a number higher than that. I was just wondering if you could talk us through...
Sure.
So this is just a preliminary estimate or...
It's a preliminary estimate. The last numbers, the figures that we received from the Department of Revenue and the Department of Education was you might, you, we can potentially receive about $1,100 per student. So that's what they're, um, saying to use as an estimate for the guidelines. We could receive more or we could receive less.
$1,100 per, um...
Per kindergarten student. Correct. We have a full-day program.
Did you say...
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So this adds up to that?
Correct.
Okay, is this, is this the Keno money that you're talking about?
Correct. Yep. Keno aid, kindergarten aid. Yes.
Please go out and enjoy Keno.
Counselor Hosmer?
Did you indicate that was one-time funding or, uh, one-time fund or no?
No. The kindergarten aid is not. What I was referring to, the one-time funding, is the infrastructure funds. Yeah, 'cause that's for a special project that it's earmarked for, and we've already been approved in the process, and we have the authority to spend that. Any other questions on the revenues? Okay. So I'm just gonna move on to page four, in case if there's any questions regarding the budget guide. This is just, sorry?
I do have one question.
Okay.
Back on that page. This transfer from trust fund 362, what is that?
So we are going to be requesting, um, trust fund monies to come through. So that would be from the Health Trust trust fund we have, and the Building Maintenance Trust Fund, and the, um, Health Trust.
And what is that gonna be used for?
To help offset the expenditures for our budget. Yep. Great question. Okay, so page four is just to give you a budget guide if you've never seen the school district budget before. The fund is always gonna be 21, so we kinda drop it when we're presenting the budget. So if you don't see 21, that's why. We have three funds. We have the general fund, which is the school operating budget. We have the federal funds, which are grants, and then we have a food service fund. So we don't talk about the, um, the grants, and we don't talk about food service, 'cause they're self-revolving funds. So the only potential it has for an impact of taxation is the general fund. Okay? So, and then you can see the function, the object, and then the school location is how the codes are all broken out. So when you get too further in the packet, you'll see that every account has a code. It has an object, it has a description, and then it has the amount of money that was, that was spent in '15, '16, '16, '17, what was proposed in '17, '18, and then what we're, um, seeking for the '18, '19 school year. So what I'm gonna do is just go over page six. Um, this is the overview of the entire budget. This is by what we call object. So object just breaks it down, so you can kinda see salaries and benefits and so forth. Under the 100s, which is all salaries, um, the first one is the adult education. That is to, um, that increase there is for the high set program, um, which will be offset by some tuition from, um, other local districts. The collective bargaining agreement, um, that you can see there with the difference is because of the teachers' association contract that we approved last year. EAL, the only major change, um, that we had in actual personnel throughout the entire budget process this year was we reduced, um, one part-time secretary at the middle school. And due to attrition, we had one ESOL teacher be replaced in-house with a part, um, ESOL person and a part special education teacher. So those are the only personnel changes that we have throughout this entire budget. That's it. And you can see the part-time secretary there. The ins and the outs is only a small change of $158. The administrators', um, change there is due to the adult education, um, grant funds that we're gonna receive. Tutors is due to additional tutors that are needed per IEPs, which is special, um, you know, education, individual education plans, if you don't know what an IEP is. The salary adjustment account, which is the biggest account here, that is a placeholder. We were, we are currently negotiating our EAL, which is our, um, support staff contract. We are in the process of, and we're continuing negotiations right now. We also were currently in the process of negotiating our custodial staff, um, LASS, until they dissolved. They decided to dissolve this year, so now they are becoming non-union members. There's no more custodial union at all. And the admin raises are also in there, and salary adjustments for teachers that are contractual are in there. So that's why that account is so large, because we have, um, currently, the EAL administrators, salary adjustments, and we have money set aside for what was going to be used for negotiations is now going to be used to give those folks raises that are gonna be non-union staff going forward. Okay? Stipend positions, the decrease there is because of the LEA contract that we had last year. We had a 5% reduction to our, um, co-curriculars, as well as there is, um, they're losing a year of experience. So you can see the changes in that due to the contract being passed last year. So overall, the salaries are, um, $904,910 increase. Going into the benefits, um, we were lucky enough to have a health insurance increase of only 2.4%. That is a very low, um, rate that we received this year.
2.4?
2.4. Correct. And the reason why that number is also so low, which is, um, something I'd like to point out, is during last year's negotiations with the, um, teachers' union, they are now going to be paying 4% of their premiums. So the change that we're receiving from that, plus the low, um, insurance rates, we only have to, um, we only had to raise about $104,000 for, to cover health insurance expenditures. And then the FICA retirement, um...
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Going back to salaries, and I'm sorry if this is redundant, on collective bargaining agreement...
Mm-hmm.
It's a 6.1%, $551,000. Is this something that's gonna be year over year? Is this a contract in place for how many years, and would, would we see the same type of increases each year?
You can anticipate the same amount of increases every year, and it would be a five-year contract. We have four years remaining.
This is a five-year contract that the city council agreed to fund last year.
So the increase in that over time would be a five-year, about 2.5 million over the five-year term?
Well, if you only count it one year at a time, but they don't, the base doesn't go away every year, so you're...
Okay.
It's more, a lot more than that.
As an increase, okay.
Increase over today or the increase over previous, from last fiscal year is a lot more than that. It's not just five times that number. It's because the base keeps growing.
Right.
Right, and also through attrition, as we have, um, more senior teachers leaving and being replaced, we try to do that as most economically as we possibly can. So it's not necessarily a dollar-for-dollar.
Thank you. Thank you.
Absolutely. Any questions regarding benefits? So the benefits are just correlated to, um, the salaries. So typically, and it's common, that salaries and benefits in school districts, they represent anywhere from 70 to 90%. In our particular year, it's, um, going to be about 75% salary and benefits of this budget is driven by that. So, and then the remainder, the other largest piece of the pie for us is contracted services due to our special education, um, services, which we're gonna get into next. So under the 300s, um, we have, um, as you can see, we have contracted professional services, and we also have special education services. Those are driven by, um, IEPs and our contractual obligations that the district has, um, and we have to fully mandate those. The small changes, um, in the testing and fees is just due to, um, supplies. The other one, the extended school year program, about $17,000, that's for summer, um, special education students during the summer program. That would be contraction, um, contractual. And athletic services is to, the increase there is to provide for trainer, um, police detail, um, increased, and the referee expenditures, expenses increased as well. Yes, sir.
Could you, uh...
Sorry?
Okay to ask a question?
Sure.
Counselor Lippman has a question. On, um, the auditing fee, could you remind us what that is, uh, spent for?
That is for the end-of-the-year fiscal audit that we have.
So you, who, who does share audit?
Same as the city.
Same as the city. So you share, you're a share of that audit?
We do share that expense.
That's what I thought.
Yep.
Christine?
Yes, sir.
I got a question back up on, uh, the 100 thing there.
Okay.
Salary adjustment account.
Correct.
Is that the money the city set aside?
No, it's not. That is to, that's a placeholder for negotiations. For what we had was two unions. We now have one union, um, for administrator contracts, um, because we're merit-based, so there's a pool set aside, um, and for the salary adjustments. So four different groups are in that account.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Philosophically, in terms of your, uh, compensation for non-union employees, do you, do you, do you use what the union employees are getting as a guide for that? Or how do you, is that just on an individual basis or...
It's on an individual basis, and it's merit-based, up to a 3%.
So it's person by person?
Correct.
As opposed to everybody gets 5% or 3% or something like that?
Yep. Any other questions before I go to the 400s? So the major difference in here I would just, um, like to mention is the contracted services for equipment. Last year, we had to reduce a, um, tech support, um, person, and in doing so, we, we felt the, um, the need that we needed to do contracted services to help us get our initiatives. We have a big initiative in the district for one-to-one computing, um, and we roll out hundreds of computers at the beginning of the year, and, uh, we actually need assistance to be able to do that. Our tech, um, department is not able to do that, so they requested, um, the increase this year going forward to be able to help them, um, get those, um, computers up and running for the staff and for the teachers, um, and be able to maintain them and get them out. So we have the increase there of the $10,000. Not all of it's them, but the largest percentage of the increase is due to the, um, contracted services assistance. The special projects, um, for contracted service here, so it's really hard when you do a zero-based budget, like I mentioned, um, and the fact that, um, it's a needs-based. So you can watch the dollars kinda move around, and they go up and down here and there. But what I'd like to mention is, overall, our contracted services for our building and special projects are down. They actually are about $10,000 down, um, in each of those accounts, um, which we were watching very closely, because you might recall that we had two facility directors last year. We implemented, um, to go to one facility director district-wide this current year, um, and we wanted to see how that was going to play out. It's played out very well for the district. We have not had to hire, um, additional support. We've not had to hire additional contracted services, so we're doing very well with that, um, as it speaks. So overall, if you watch the dollars, they're down by about 10 grand. So here, you can kinda see that for special projects is down. And the other one is architectural engineering. The reason why that is down so low is that we have decided, based on our current fund balances, that we will not be putting $100,000 away to the Building Maintenance Trust Fund, 'cause after this current year, we'll have about just over half a million dollars in that account. And the architectural and engineering of $25,000, we have decided that we could take a pass for one year as well, in an effort to not have to make additional personnel cuts, um, because our funds are sufficient. Yes, sir.
For Hamel?
Last year, I asked you if you were gonna do anything last summer, uh, to the building, and I believe you said no, but you were putting away $100,000 last year.
Correct. We put 150 of it.
Yeah, so, and then this year, you're not doing any?
This year, we are. We have another $100,000 going away this, 150 going away this year.
So what do you...
Next year, '18, '19, we're anticipating that we are not going to, 'cause we'll have over half a million at the end of this year.
So what are, what are the plans for rehabbing or whatever you wanna call it of the high school this year?
So, what are the projects? I can look them up in the back for you in just a second.
Okay, you're gonna go get to them?
Um, I can, if you'd like. They are, are listed out in every single, uh, building what the special projects are. Every building has their own. And some are paving, some are, um, some, uh, cement fixtures, some are lighting fixtures, things of that nature. What the district is currently doing right now, we are actually working, um, with Siemens contractor to do performance contracting, which just uses the savings that we have, um, to be able to pay for future projects. So we are undergoing a performance contract and audit with them. So that's why we also decided to hold off in a year, because we're waiting to gather that information and see what savings the district could actually potentially save on top of it.
Okay, but it's listed in the back?
Yes. Every single project that every single dollar is tied to is listed in here. Yep. Great question. Going on to page seven, um, under 500s, the changes in, um, transportation there is due to, um, we have extended-year programming, um, that you saw for, uh, the special education, and the regular transportation. You can see the increase there. I will like to, um, kinda just mention, we are currently, we currently negotiated a new contract with First Student. It's a five-year contract, and we were fortunate enough to lock in at about three and a quarter for the first year. Whereas our neighboring districts were, um, highly into the double digits. So we were lucky enough that, um, we worked with them, and our partnership saved us on, um, the high increase there. So we can have some, uh, stability going forward. The other change under networking, that $30,000 reduction, is because we had a district-wide initiative of a major, um, Wi-Fi network overhaul last year due to, um, one-to-one computing. And as you might have recalled, we got e-rate funds that paid 80% of that project. So that's just a matter of that project going away as a one-time project, and so now you're just seeing the decrease, because we're not doing it. The only building that has not been completed is the high school. So we're doing the high school this year, and that will have completed our Wi-Fi project for the entire district. And, um, tuition handicap, um, for non-public, you can see, is down due to the services and the needs of the special education. Supplies, um, moving on to the 600s, the, um, changes in there are just due to changes that the, uh, local building has decided to change. And then the major increases there are electricity. We just negotiated a five-year contract, um, with natural gas, um, and electricity. And the increase there is not due to our rates, but due to, um, uh, the usage. Books and periodicals, that $17,000 reduction is mainly at Woodland Heights School. They have, um, completed their, uh, replacement cycle on their textbooks. So therefore, they don't need a $15,000 allocation as they did last year, so that's the biggest change there. And software increase there for $17,000 is due to special education software that we need to purchase, um, to maintain, uh, the programs for them. Moving on to 700s.
Is that purchase price or is that some sort of lease arrangement or...
What, the $17,000? No, that's just the changes that you're seeing. That's not actually the price of the actual product.
Is this stuff you buy or are you...
Correct. Well, you don't, um, you don't lease that. You technically like, um, you pay for a service fee. A annual service fee is how I would describe it. Is that fair enough? Amy?
Subscription.
Subscription. There you go. Thank you.
Okay.
So it's an annual fee that we have to pay.
It's not something you're purchasing occasionally. It's something you're paying an annual fee for to use.
Correct. Yes. Yep. Um, let me see. I just did 700. Did I do some, yeah, 700s. No, I just did 600s. Okay, 700s. I did 700s? Okay. I thought I did 600. All right, so I'm on 800s. So the main difference there is the principal and debt interest of our bonds, and then $5,000 reduction to graduation assemblies and other. So the overall increase of our budget is $997,205, which is, overall, represents a 3.02% increase. Again, it's tax-tap compliant. Uh, we, just as a reminder, we are asking for a budget amendment of that $65,000 to meet our gross appropriation number. It has no tax impact to the district budget at all. Are there any questions?
Say that again about the no impact?
So because we are asking for an appropriation of $65,000, that will be offset by additional revenues from $65,000, so therefore, there's no tax impact.
They're not asking to raise the amount by taxes?
Correct. We're just asking the gross expenditure, the amount that we can actually spend is the authority to spend. We're asking that number to be increased by $65,000, and we actually increase our revenues of $65,000, so they wash.
Where?
I'm sorry?
From where?
From Medicaid.
Now, is it, is the, is the $65,000 coming from the, uh, uh, impact fee?
Correct.
That's in there also?
Correct.
So this is in addition to that?
The $65,000 from the impact fees lowers my appropriation, so what we're asking is for this additional revenue that we receive to increase it, to kinda put me back whole again, if you will.
Is that your understanding?
Yeah, the understanding is they're increasing the appropriation and adjusting it by non-property tax revenue. So again, it is neutral to property tax and remains a tax-cap-compliant budget.
So is the, the $65,000 in Medicaid money extra is not in this budget now?
It is in that budget. It's in our revenues, and it's in my bottom-line budget. So the number that we're looking for the gross appropriation is at the bottom.
Counselor Lippman? I think the council, um, had an interest in, um, the work that's been done at the high school in terms of making improvements along the way. As you sort of pointed us to there, can you, can you help us identify, um, in the high school budget, what's going on there?
I sure can.
I think it's around 40 or so, right?
41. So next year, um, under account 2620, 431, which is special projects, you can see the decrease from prior year. We requested $83,000, and this year, we're requesting $41,000. And if you look below, you can see the description, that this account provides monies for flooring in the auditorium, carpet, stairway treads and landings, roof, press, box, and air conditioning in the special education classrooms and adult ed offices. So those monies are earmarked for those special projects.
This morning, I was, just happened to be, um, driving along and picked up, uh, there's a news story about some remediation work that, uh, high school's planning to do relative to air quality. Is that coming out of the current budget?
Current budget. Yes. Yes, sir.
What does that involve? What, the air quality? 'Cause we changed, when we redid, uh, Hewitt Center, a lot of those things were changed, I believe.
I'm gonna defer that to Mr. Minahan.
I actually got a full-on explanation of what that involves.
In front of the mic.
All right. So, the radon mitigation involves four classrooms in the basement. And so, what they do is they will drill a hole in the floor, put in a pipe. There's, I guess, rocks underneath it to help with the seepage or whatever. Then, they're gonna push the pipes up through the ceiling and out the garage entry where there'll be a fan, exhaust fan to blow it out. So, that is my understanding of the radon mitigation process. And the only reason it's at the high school is because that's the only one with a basement. The other schools don't have it below ground, so.
Just throughout the district, what's the biggest project you're undertaking for facilities?
For this year?
For the new budget.
Well, that's a good question. I'd have to look at them. I would probably say the biggest is the paving projects that we have at the elementaries, coordinating that and making sure we have the proper drainage runoff. That's gonna be the biggest one. I think that's the biggest.
So, one of the things that Peter Johnson is doing in concert with Christine is they're creating sort of a master plan of the year. So, I know when I was looking at it before, this year has a lot of replace this carpet, let's do this with this paving. So, there's nothing like a major renovation. It's more smaller projects to kind of enhance, in some ways, the air quality. Like at Woodland Heights, they've been doing a lot of work trying to clean up some of the carpet, which gets old and sort of musty. So, those are the types of projects that are mostly listed for this upcoming year.
And you can see those accounts under the 431, the 2620, 431. You can see that in every building, what the projects are. They're listed.
How many classrooms at the high school have not been updated? We updated a lot of them over the last few years, the last several years ago.
That's an excellent question. I can get that information for you, but I don't have that off the top of my.
So, where are you taking us next?
That's a good question. I can continue. I can go further into specifics, or I can give you the, the next one that I would go over would be by function. Or I can just end it there, and I don't know how much time I have.
Councilwoman?
Do you want to speak to enrollment? And I know the figures are in here by each school, but kind of what?
The first, on the first page, you have it, on page 10 is the entire district. We have it by, the elementary is the entire, and then you can go into by building and see the enrollment projections. Sure, I'm just making a note.
So, in general, with enrollment, it's pretty stable. If I remember correctly, you'll see an increase at the middle school level of about, if I remember, 30, 40 students, something like that. The other places are pretty stable. I think what we're finding, though, is that the needs of the students coming in are much more impactful on the budget, I guess I would say. They're much more needy, many of the kids.
What do you mean by that?
They're in need of more services, whether those services are special education services, 504 services, homeless needs that need to be met. You're seeing a lot more in the area of kids who have experienced quite a bit of trauma. And so, there are associated needs with that, whether it's, we have, one of the things that's happened over the past several years is an increase in the number of social workers that we've needed, and they've provided wraparound services for our families. So, trying to do more of a whole-family approach, it's still a work in progress, I must say. And, you know, people that have lived here for a lot longer than I know, then I certainly know that the, there's been a lot more move-in and move-outs over the last several years than there were in years past. And that creates its own set of challenges.
Is there a way that we can look at Laconia versus Guilford versus Belmont versus anybody and kind of get an understanding of what's creating the increase here in Laconia? Is it something that's statewide? Is it something that everybody's experiencing? Is it?
Yeah, my sense would be, one of the ways, so I don't think like there's the one database that says, how does Laconia compare to other places? But if you go to the Department of Ed, and we can provide you with that, and you look at like free and reduced lunch, our free and reduced lunch amount is like 50-some-odd percent district-wide. If you look at some other districts, they're at 5%. That's one way that there's a big difference. If you look at our percent of students requiring special education services, I don't know if ours are any higher than the average. Yeah, so ours is up from the average. That will increase our, you know, cost per student. I don't think, like, if you look at our general cost per student, we're a teeny bit higher than the state average, but not substantially. So, last time I looked, I think we were 14-something a student, maybe 15. And it ranges from 13, 12, 13 up to 25,000 a student. Yes, sir.
Go ahead. The free and reduced lunch percentage, can you give us a few-year trend on that? It's because 50-somethings seems not to have been an increase. I think we've been in the 50-something for a while.
Yeah, so I think it's, I get the sense that it stayed fairly stable. What you see is that it moves around. Like, it was predominantly, my understanding, located in one, two schools in the past. Now, it's in all the schools. They all range from 40-something to.
Five years ago, we were using the number 60%.
Yes, Woodland itself is 70.
True or not, I don't know, but that's what everybody was saying.
Well, I know it's, I think when I gave a presentation this fall, it was 55% overall. But you have the variation. I can't remember which one's the lowest, but probably the high school would be my guess because they don't generally apply. So, that might be at 40, and then I think Woodland was around 70, something like that.
So, but the enrollment has, seems to have stabilized.
Correct, yeah.
Just for, I know I've said this before, but for those that are new, the, as a point of reference, I remember Bob Champlin saying many times that he had been here for 15 years and that the enrollment was 2,500 every year for decades.
Yeah.
So, we're about 20% under what the enrollment was for decades.
There was a recent report, I think it came out today, Work, Stay, Play New Hampshire, that said that our ability to keep and attract young families and kids is a challenge for us as a state. There are, you know, pockets. Bedford's seen increasing enrollment. I think Dover's seen increasing enrollment. Probably like 10 communities maybe, and then the other 70-some-odd have had declining. Us to be stabilized is actually probably a fairly good sign if you want a lot of kids and families. I'll let it come back to you.
Okay, what's the will of the council? Do you want more information or have more questions, more detailed information?
Christine, what page was that capital on? You said 41?
For the high school. It's 41. And I can tell you. And then for the middle school, it would be page 34.
Where on 41 does it list what you're gonna be doing?
So, right down below, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six accounts down. You see where it says 2620, 431, 45? 45 is just the location, so that's high school. So, it's color-coded. Your book is color-coded, so you know when you're in a different building. So, the orange-ish, whatever you want to call that color that came out on yours, is high school. Yeah, so it's kind of orange. And then you can see on page 42, it's kind of pink. That's the adult education. Elementaries are green and so forth. Do you see that account, Mr. Hamel? And if you go to page 34, halfway down, you can see what the account there is going to provide. In that one, they're gonna do some LED lighting in the gym, painting classrooms, and the service hall. And then if you continue to go backwards on page 27, it's listed for, that's Elm Street. And then Pleasant Street is on page 21. Oh, sorry. It's on page 22. And then Woodland is on page 17.
Councilwoman, I have a question. Could you go over the, you did at the very beginning, the trust fund? I know the 362, 898, the three components were again?
Special education, health insurance, and the building maintenance.
And in terms of the depletion of those three, I don't know if you know what the balance?
They would not be depleted.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get a sense of what, 362 is what percent of?
So, of each of them. So, right now, we have about $289,000 in the special education trust fund. We'll have about 550,000 in the building maintenance trust fund. And the health trust fund, we will have, I want to say 400.
Thank you.
Yep, 400.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we're about 40 minutes. That's about perfect. So, I thank you very much to Dr. Minahan and Mrs. Bluen.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity.
And I note that a majority of the school board is here tonight. I'm counting, I think, all but two, I think. All right, so we thank you for attending as well.
You're not gonna say for the excitement coming next?
Not this time.
Did you say page two, Scott?
Where the 362 came from?
Yeah, where's that, the list of all those things in that book?
It's not. It's in your monthly manager's report. Those are the school ones. We don't break those down to school. We can get them for you then.
They're not, they're not funded. Are we all sat? All right, we're on to the police department, and Chief Cantfield is with us tonight. And I also saw at least one commissioner here.
Yes.
Mr. Widem is in the back there, I see. Welcome, chief.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Myers. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to present our fiscal year 2018-19 budget proposal for the police department. Before we get started, I'd like to recognize Mr. Doug Widem, the chairman of the police commission in the back, as well as Captain Alan Grayton, Lieutenant Tom Swett, and Officer Eric Adams, who you'll hear from later on tonight. So, in our budget proposal, we requested under the salary line item, this item funds 52 full-time employees, 42 of which are sworn police officers, 10 full-time civilian personnel, no additional full-time staff. It has been requested as part of this budget. Under special duty, part-time salaries, this line item funds part-time police officers, dispatch, park and enforcement, secretarial staff, and animal control officer. The 2017-18 budget request was 65,000. This year, we requested 95,000 with an increase for some additional part-time staff. And it was since recommended under the city manager's budget at $75,000. Under the shift differential line item, this is a collective bargaining agreement cost for, those costs incurred is an additional amount of money for officers that work the hours, between the hours of 4:00 p.m. and 8:00 o'clock in the morning. And under our overtime hourly employees, over the years, we've done, made a great emphasis on trying to reduce our overtime staff. We use sergeants who cover our patrol supervisor shifts. We use our lieutenants to cover those shifts in cost savings as far as overtime goes. But there are certain times that require overtime to be spent, whether there are incidents that occur at the end of shift where officers are held over, officers are called in, or certainly court overtime when officers are required to go into court and testify when they're off duty. As far as the court time goes, we've made efforts to reduce that in many ways. But unfortunately, sometimes it's working with the court schedule, and there's only so much we can do to avoid having officers testify on their own time. Under the holidays line item, this funds the cost of officers who work on the holidays. They're compensated at time and a half in addition to their regular pay working holidays. We noticed that. We try to do minimum staffing on most holidays, with the exception of holidays like 4th of July, which are typically very busy, but most holidays are very minimally staffed. Under the longevity line item, these are longevity for officers that have served with the city of Laconia and contractual obligations under the collective bargaining agreement. The health insurance line item went down slightly. This funds health insurance costs to the city police employees based upon enrollment at the time of the budget proposal. Under the retirement costs, we have officers who are employees who are either group one employees or group two employees. And you'll see the contribution rates there, as well as a department request for 957,586. Under the telephone line item, this costs, this covers the cost of telephone service for the operation of all police phone lines, emergency phone lines coming into the police station. This was level funded at $22,000. Under the equipment maintenance line item, this was level funded as well at $20,000. This funds both office administrative equipment, periodic calibration of laser radar units, breath alcohol machines, portable breath test and speed radar lasers, that type of annual maintenance. Our training line item was requested at $40,000. Last year, it was at $30,000, and this was level funded at, or actually, this was funded at $40,000 according to the city manager's budget. This funds the costs associated with training, and those costs could be ammunition. It could be training ammunition for less lethal certification, as well as certain tuition-based training. Better training certainly equals sound decisions under extreme stress, which increases officer safety, which is a huge concern, and overall reduces liabilities to both the department and the city. Under outside contracted services, this funds casella waste management, the mail posters meter, the inside phone lines. And as everyone is aware, certainly, we're in a technology world, and everything we run from our records management system to crime reports to some of the software we use, such as Guardian Track. And they're all annual-based fees, and that's what outside contracted services includes. As part of this request, it's partial funding to fund a body camera program to equip officers with body cameras, which is a very comprehensive program, but certainly reduces our liability when it comes to use of force complaints or just complaints in general. And that's what we'd like to move to as part of this, as partial funding.
So, is this request, the increase that you're requesting for this, is this based largely on video cams? Is that what, you tell me what, tell me what the specifics are for the difference between the manager's recommendation of 101 and yours of 125?
The 125 would have funded body cameras for the entire year. The 101, we would start the program later into the budget year to fund the cost of the body cams.
So, we're gonna phase in, it was about a $50,000 program over two fiscal years, and the chief indicated they probably And the chief indicated they probably start with a few individuals on each shift, kind of work out some of the kinks and get through the logistics of it, and then continue to roll it out. So it's not that we're not doing it, it's that we're going to phase it in to help absorb it into the budget over a two-year, a two fiscal year period.
This is year two.
No, this is year one for this one.
For body cameras.
For body cameras.
Does, do you have to buy forty of them, or can they be reused amongst, on a different shift by different officers?
No, the, the, the cameras are individually assigned, and it's not the cost of the cameras are, are crazy expensive. It's the cost of the storage and the redaction software and stuff that has to be filed for discovery, because all of those are subject to write-to-no request. They have to, there's redaction that has to occur within the software, and then certainly discovery that has to go to attorneys. And certainly, high-definition video takes a lot of storage, and it's all cloud-based, and that's, that's the, the major cost of this.
Do you have video cams in cruises?
We do not.
Chief, how successful are you at hiring certified officers?
Certainly hiring in general is a, a very big challenge. I can tell you, we had three candidates to fill our three open spots. And as of right now, we have one, one candidate that's, still remains. Certified officers are almost nonexistent to come by, let alone qualified people to, to apply. We've run it through, I think, three or four testing processes this spring. We've, we did out well over two-hundred candidates to come up with several, several positions. It, it's a challenge, and it's not just a challenge that we experience here in Laconia. It's a challenge that's across the state, and really across the nation at this point.
I, if I may, I recently learned the state police provides hiring bonuses now. Are you doing anything along those lines to encourage certified officers to come on board?
We do not. Well, we have a, a program for, if officers recruit a certified officer and they are able to stay, I think they get a couple day, was it one day or two days?
Certified officer, three days.
So if an officer that works currently for us recruits a certified officer, they get three days.
But, but we don't do anything for the candidate at this time?
We do not.
So we have, we're funding forty-two sworn officers, and right now you have thirty-nine. Is that what you're saying?
Correct. And if you notice, the actual salary line item was reduced somewhat with the anticipation of not filling those positions by July first. So I'm not going to bore you.
Chief, has that been fairly typical in recent years?
Not filling up positions?
No, I just, have you routinely had two, three positions open in recent years?
You know, I mean, it's, it's, it certainly comes and goes based on, on retirements. And, you know, recently we had a candidate that did not make it through the, the training program. We had another candidate that left to go to state police, so it, it definitely comes and goes. But a lot of it is based on their, whether they make it through the training program, but also certainly their goal aspirations. And if, if they use us as a training ground and go into state police or something, that's very little control versus someone that's looking to establish residency in Laconia or in the area and, and have a family, so.
Do you have any programs, I mean, do they, they sign a contract, correct, once they get through the academy and they come to work for you? Do they sign a contract for a certain amount of time?
They do. We recently brought back the contract. It's a three-year contract, and it's prorated based on the training costs associated with the field training program, the in-house field, uh, training program, which is six weeks, as well as the, the sixteen weeks at the academy. So if they leave within the, you know, it's broken down by month, so the further out they get, the less they would be required to pay back.
So that's a penalty they have to pay?
Correct.
Is it the individual themselves?
Correct.
Okay.
Counselor. In terms of the program that's at the Hewitt Center for Criminal Justice, I believe, are we finding any students out of that ultimately?
Yeah, I mean, we, we certainly, that, that, that's a really good program. It is a training ground. I think we've had several of those candidates apply. I think one was in the pipeline at, at one point, as well as the CRO program. I know we have a couple students that are in the, the park and enforcement this summer that are interested in becoming police officers, so we certainly exploit that as much as possible. We began running, running our own test, in addition to the, the Seacoast test that we participate in at Great Bay Community College. The problem with, the reason why we broke away from that one and started doing it on our own in combination with that it was that we're competing with many, many other agencies that are using the Great Bay testing process down there. And a lot of the candidates are come from Massachusetts. They want to get certified here because it's easier to get hired here and then go back to Massachusetts. Massachusetts operates under the civil service program, so it's very difficult to get certified down there. Whereas if they come here, they spend a couple years and they go back, and, and we've experienced that ourselves, so.
Can, Chief, can you estimate, estimate for us what, what you think the training costs are for an uncertified officer? I mean, if you're, if you're doing a three-year contract, you assign some value per year to, to make up for the cost. So you must have some idea what the costs are, or if, if you don't have them here today, could you get them to us?
I, I could certainly get, certainly get you a, a much more accurate estimate, but it's, it's pretty darn close to a year's salary. By the time we hire someone, they go through a six-week training period. They go to the academy, which is sixteen weeks long. They get out, they go through a twelve-week field training program with a field training officer, and then there's still a period of time before, during the rest of their probation year, year before they become confident and competent to be able to really handle cases on their own.
So that's forty, forty-five thousand dollars, something like that?
Somewhere in that area. You know, and, and on top of that, you have the cost of uniforms, the cost of, you know, ammunition to train them and, and those costs associated. But we could certainly get you a, a much more definitive number.
I'd appreciate it.
Certainly.
How do you, how do you penalize that if they leave? I mean, how do you get the money back?
Well, certainly, it's, it's a contract that they sign before they're hired. They know the cost. The costs are broken down into thirty-six different months. It's prorated. And quite frankly, if they don't pay it, I guess we look at it as one of two different ways. One's an integrity issue. If they agreed to this obligation, and now they're, they're going through a background process for another agency, and I think the other agency would probably look at that negatively. And if they, quite frankly, refuse it, I guess we'd have the option of, you know, take them to court to, to seek payment of that.
So basically, it's if they want to do it, if they want to pay it back?
Yeah, I mean, you know.
You, you don't hold anything aside from their pay, or, I mean, you know what I'm saying?
We don't. I mean, we, we certainly.
You ask for it, but they really don't have to, if they don't want to.
Aside from being able to take them to court and certainly the, the moral obligation to, you know, you sign a contract agreeing to, to work these times or, or to pay this amount back if you leave earlier.
There, there is a case out of Franklin back in the eighties where the courts ruled that those contracts are enforceable.
I, I, yeah. I, I heard in Maine that if another city, the employee work, goes to work for another city other than the one they were trained in or whatever, there's an understanding amongst the towns there that that town has to pay the other town for that officer leaving whatever was remaining on his contract.
Well, I mean, at least you're, you're recouping the cost of those, those training costs. Not an ideal situation, but at least you're recouping those, those costs.
So there's nothing like that here in New Hampshire?
No, not that I'm aware of.
I know I've asked you this before, but I'm going to ask you again because I forget.
Write it down, Stan.
I do. I write it down, and then I can't find the notes anywhere.
Forget where you put those.
Welcome to Counselor Ball's Greatest Hits.
Can you give us just an idea of, over the last three or four or five years? This is my fifth budget that I'm working on. How much manpower you're short for, for every year, on just an average or something like that? I mean, you, you staffed for third, forty-one, forty-two now, and you're at thirty-nine. And I'd just like to know if that's chronic, if that's usual standard?
Well, I mean, certainly the, you know, it, it's very hard to predict based on retirements. I can tell you this year, we're looking at two, maybe three retirements coming up this year. Those, those positions can't be replaced until they actually retire. So then, once somebody retires, we have to run a testing process, which consists of a physical agility test, a written test, interviews, chiefs' interviews, and then they have to go through a background process, which takes even an expedited background process. We're talking four to six weeks to get the psychological, the polygraph test done, all the interviews and everything else done. So even if everything lines up, it takes, it takes quite some time because we can't start that process until they actually leave. You know, and then we have to send, we have to, they have to go through the in-house training academy, the police academy and everything else. So it, it, there is a huge delay, and that, that's always why we're lagging behind.
I'm just curious to know, because I know that before Brenda left, she made some effort to, to have another officer.
Yes, she did.
Yeah.
You know, but I, I can tell you, we're looking at, you know, probably two or three retirements coming up this year. And we can't fill those positions until they actually leave, and then it, there, there's a process that takes place after the fact. You know, as long as we can get names off of a list, whether it's the Great Bay test, whether it's our own test. It's about timing, you know, and it, it has to coincide with the timing of the academy too, when they hold four, four academies a year. So it has to coincide with those times as well.
Counselor Cheney.
Chief, you can do the background portion of candidates before somebody retires, can't you?
Yeah, we, we certainly can. The, the problem is, right now, it, it's a candidate's world to, to apply. So if they're applying in two or three departments, and we put six weeks of work into a background investigation, and we hold on to them for three months before we, we look at hiring them, they're most likely have applications out other places, and they're going to be scooped up way before then.
Counselor Hosmer.
Thanks, Chief. Just back to a couple of numbers. You said you had all, over two-hundred applications for, and you identified three people that you were going to make a, a job offer to. Is, is that right?
In, in the end, yes.
In the end. What was the, why, what, what eliminated so many of those candidates?
Well, quite frankly, I can tell you, you know, drug use, life choices. It, it's, it's hard to find people that can pass a polygraph, that are honest during the, the process. Those are all, all reasons for, for immediate, you know, rejection. Honesty in the, in the background process, you know, if you don't disclose something and it gets discovered later on, whether it's through other interviews, whether it's through a polygraph examination, that's an automatic disqualifier.
Thank you. And that's not new. It's been that way for a long time.
Counselor Haynes.
Chief, do you have any concerns about the safety of our schools?
I, I absolutely do not, and I actually will touch on that later on in this presentation. So I'm not going to bore you with crime stats. Was there another question?
You didn't cover that, no?
No. So I won't bore you with a lot of crime stats, but I can tell you, for the year two thousand and seventeen, we had zero, zero murders, eleven rapes, twelve robberies, fifty-three aggravated assaults, three-hundred-and-eighty-five simple assaults, ninety-six criminal threatenings, sixty-eight burglaries, five-hundred-and-forty thefts, twenty-five thefts of motor vehicles, two arsons, two-hundred-and-thirty-two criminal mischief incidents, three-hundred-and-twelve drug offenses, sixty-four DWI arrests, and three-hundred-and-forty-four protective custody incidents, with a total of twenty-two thousand, eight-hundred-and-nineteen calls for service, which is up just slightly from last year, which was at twenty-two thousand, one-hundred-and-ninety-five. So white-collar crime is down two-point-eight-six percent. We had a total of thirty-four different white-collar, or theft by deceptions, as compared to thirty-five in two thousand and sixteen. Sixty-seven fraudulent uses of credit cards, eighteen identity thefts, zero welfare frauds, three crim, uh, computer crimes, twelve check frauds, and five computers used to commit crime. I can tell you, those numbers are probably well under-reported because a lot of times with fraudulent uses of credit cards, identity theft, they're not necessarily reported to us or investigated as crimes, so they're, they're probably under-reported. Community-related calls for service. In two thousand and seventeen, we did seven-hundred-and-eighty-three different special response areas. These are areas that are designated as areas that need extra patrol. Officers will check them depending on the, the SRA, sometimes several times a shift, sometimes once a shift, but they're directed patrol areas. Officers conducted six-hundred-and-sixty-seven park walk-in talks. This is when they parked in deliberate areas, got out and made a, a presence in uniform walk-in. We conducted a hundred-and-fifty-nine different community policing events, twelve bicycle registrations, a hundred-and-eighty-six vehicle identification number verifications, and conducted a total of seventy house and business checks. The house and business checks are when people go away on vacation, they can fill out a form, and our officers will check it. Depending on the length of the time, they'll check it on a weekly basis or a daily basis as a means of security for them.
One of those was me this year, by the way. Speaking of old people.
Me too.
I don't know who was more embarrassed, the officer or me.
So in two thousand and seventeen, we responded to six-hundred-and-seventeen alarms, a hundred-and-twenty-three suicidal subjects, a thousand, three-hundred-and-six disturbances, three-hundred-and-sixty-two domestic disturbances, a hundred-and-forty-six drug overdoses, nine fatal drug overdoses. We picked up a hundred-and-ninety-four needles for destruction and did six-hundred-and-nineteen different welfare checks. So our two thousand and eighteen department goals and objectives for this year, as identified by our staff, was more training and incident command training for our supervisors. This is vital that we, speaking of school safety, that we are able to establish a strong incident command and run a system in, in what they call a unified command with all of our law enforcement partners, our EMS partners and our fire department personnel. We're working on re-establishing the crime line, which was very vibrant, and we got a lot of anonymous information. And we're working with a company called tip four-one-one to bring this into the modern age, where people can text tips to us. They can send pictures of different crime that may be happening completely anonymously, and something that would tie right into this crime line program as a means of soliciting information. We don't get a lot of information by people coming down to the police department saying, hey, there's drug activity going on in this area. We get a lot anonymously, and this is a way to kind of collate that and bring it to us, especially the younger generation, that, that that's how they communicate is through, through texting. One of our two thousand and eighteen goals was to re-establish the K-9 program and achieve certification in patrol narcotics. We've had a police K-9 for many, many years, until it fell by the wayside a number of years ago. We have an officer that's in training right now. He's with the Boston Police K-9 Academy. Once he completes that program, he should be back in July, and we'll have a, a K-9 fully operational again. Another one of our goals that Lieutenant Fennagle's working on is establishing a recruitment team. The goal of this was to establish a recruitment team and incorporate some of the patrol officers into this effort because they talk to officers in other departments, they talk to officers at training. It's to, to kind of build that whole scheme throughout the department instead of just the recruiting coming from the recruiting lieutenant. If the recruitment comes from many members of the department, and they're speaking about this agency on a, on a daily basis to other people, it may increase our, our, our efforts in, in getting good people here.
Is the K-9 in the budget? This budget?
We, yeah, it was, it was, it was included in the current year budget.
In the current year budget?
Correct.
Okay. It just hasn't been executed yet?
It has been. He's in training right now.
Oh.
Yes.
Well, what about the dog?
We purchased the dog.
You did?
Yes.
I didn't know that.
Yep.
Thank you.
They train together. They train together, the dog and the...
One of the other, one of the other goals for two thousand and eighteen was to renovate the, the patrol office, to update it, do some updating to some of the furniture that's in there, as well as repaint it and kind of revitalize it. Several of our members of the department are very skilled in this area, so we'll be looking at just the cost of paint and that kind of stuff that our officers will, will come in and do this themselves. Another need that was identified is a firearms range, so our firearms instructors were looking into this, researching this, coming up with a conceptual plan to bring to you all for approval at a later time. Certainly having the, the use of a firearms range, it's a critical imperishable skill. This type of training could occur, if it was in Laconia, it could occur on a more regular basis. Certainly more frequency, less time training is bene, more beneficial than training for eight hours twice a year. In addition to that, we can host schools, and we can get complimentary seats in those schools. Um, in addition to that, we can host schools and we can get complimentary seats in those schools. Uh, where officers are getting some of the training for free by hosting a certain number of seats by bringing in outside companies.
Were you secured a site for that?
Uh, we've looked at a, a, a site, um, that's still being evaluated. Um, another one of the two thousand eighteen goals was to redo the cop card program. Uh, this program was first implemented, implemented in nineteen ninety-seven. Certainly a great program that encourages youth. I mean, kids come up to you still today asking for cop cards. Um, encourages that positive interaction with youth. Uh, our current cop cards are quite outdated at this point. Um, thanks to the work of Lieutenant Sweat, we've received a grant from Merritt Village Savings Bank for twenty-five hundred dollars to cover, uh, the majority of those costs, um, to pay for that. And I think the last two thousand eighteen goal is to, uh, start a strategic planning committee, um, to look at the, the future of the, the police department over the next five years, identify goals and key areas that could be improved and, uh, to put together a plan there. So I think including your booklet that we, I gave you the, the law enforcement accreditation assessment. Uh, law enforcement accreditation was about a thousand law enforcement agencies across the country that are nationally accredited. Um, out of about seventeen thousand agencies, um, Kalia, which is the Commission on Accredited, uh, Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agency. It's certainly the, uh, the premier credential association for all law enforcement agencies, so it kind of sets the standard uh, for law enforcement services by policy, by doing what you say you're doing. Um, they've changed the assessment process. The assessment process used to be every three years. They would come out and do an onsite assessment. They've changed it now, so it's every four years. Um, however, every single year they're going in, they go into the, the program electronically, they pull out anywhere between eighty or ninety different standards and without notice, they evaluate those standards, um, to make sure that we're meeting them and then at the four-year mark, they actually come out and do a site visit. Um, that report is in your, your booklet as well. Um, and I'm happy to say that it was, it was a very good, uh, review and they identified no issues, no, no problems, so. Uh, one of the things we did late this summer, we did an employee survey. Um, this was the, the purpose was to gain insight into the thoughts and feelings of each individual employee, sworn and non-s sworn. It was designed to empower employees to give them a, a voice and shape in the agency and the future of the agency. Um, it was open to all employees. It was completely voluntary. Um, it was conducted anonymously through, uh, Google Docs. Um, and we had a very high number of, uh, people respond to it. The results of that survey are in your booklet for your review, um, but out of transparency, I shared these results with all the staff. It was very well received and we'll use the results of this survey, um, to not only affect positive but constructive change within the department. Will help construct future goals, uh, and objectives as well as construction of, uh, future budget requests and we'll use that in shaping our five-year strategic plan later this fall. Uh, so on to school safety and preparedness. We have, uh, we, we've had a school safety committee comprised of the police department, the fire department, um, the principals of each elementary school, the middle school and the high school. This group meets monthly to talk about security issues, uh, security plans, um, and anything that might be of, of concern, security related. Um, in addition to that, this past year, we, uh, conducted a sixteen-hour alert training, which is active shooter response for police. Um, this was, uh, conducted agency-wide. All of our officers went to this training. Um, it was also open to our law enforcement partners throughout the county. Um, this was all funded by the New Hampshire Homeland Security. They backfilled overtime for officers to train, um, as well as supported the training itself with instructors. So all of our officers have received that training, that initial training, um, as well as some of our law enforcement partners. Um, in addition to that, we've conducted firearms range training as far as moving in teams and, uh, different types of firearms skills on their, the range. Uh, we conducted supervisor command and control training as far as op- operating in, in incident command with our law enforcement partners. We conducted a, uh, New Hampshire Homeland Security board game, which is essentially, uh, they call it a game. It's a, it's command and control running a, a large-scale incident because there's so many different factors that come into play when you talk about incident command and, uh, a, a, a school shooting type of incident. In addition to that, we did a tabletop exercise again with Homeland Security at Woodland Heights School. This involved police, fire, the hospital, um, all of our partners. Um, it was a simulated active shooter event. Um, and when we talk about these events, they're certainly very detailed. Not only do we have the initial police response to the active shooter going on, we certainly have a concern for the, the students, the, the, uh, faculty that are in that school, rendering medical aid, working with the fire department as far as that goes. But we also have to, to deal with parents responding to such a, an, an incident and reunification. Um, in today's world with, you know, text messaging and phone calls and cell phones, parents are notified of these things almost as quickly as we are. So we have to deal with parents arriving at the scene of a school when we're still responding to that, at that active shooter event. Um, very, very hectic and certainly this type of training, whether it's the supervisor command and control, whether it's the board games, the tabletop exercises, um, it's good to bring everybody into that room and, and work through those issues. We always learn from them. In addition to that, we did a full-scale exercise last, the end of last September at Woodland Heights School. Um, it was a real live exercise with, um, full protective gear, officers donned their, their, uh, active shooter gear. We had real actors. It was just like responding to a, a, a school shooting event. Um, school staff participated in it. Um, all of our law enforcement partners participated in, and, uh, again, it was at no cost to us. It was all funded by the New Hampshire Homeland Security. Um, furthermore, as part of the school safety preparedness, um, I was asked by the, the governor to be part of the governor's task force after the, uh, school shooting in South Florida that we saw. Um, the governor convened this committee, uh, to look at school safety and things that we could do better for New Hampshire schools to better protect our, our schools here. And not only that, it was the governor's very intention to take this committee and make it, the, the work of this committee not be extended over a long period of time, but to make it a very short period of time that we could take actionable steps and make something happen to secure our schools. You know, and as we saw in, in Texas just the other day, you know, some, uh, uh, someone goes into the school, kills ten people and wounds two others. Um, that was a small town of thirteen thousand people. So this stuff is very real and if we're not trained for this, we're not prepared for this, we're way behind the eight ball. Um, so it was an honor to be part of this governor's task force. Um, the report is due out sometime the end of June and I think we're going to see some, some really good, uh, not only school hardening, safety improvements, but certainly some improvement statewide, um, whether it be from the, the police law enforcement partner response to these things or hardening of the schools themselves or the mental health, health component of this whole thing. Um, it's, it's all been dragged into this committee and I think we're going to see some good results out of that and it was an honor to be part of that. Um, talk a little bit about our, our grant efforts. Um, I have to give a lot of credit to Lieutenant Sweat because he's always out there, uh, looking for grants, ways to, um, to glean money from other sources. Uh, for the calendar year of two thousand seventeen, we received approximately four hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars in grant funding. This is stuff that was not included in our regular operating budget, but certainly pulled from other sources. These grants covered stuff from like the Granite Hammer, Granite Shield money that was funded for the opioid crisis, for certain drug investigations, certain high, uh, high-intensity patrols, to providing bulletproof vest partnerships when we replace our bulletproof vests. They pay for half of the cost of those. Uh, DWI patrol, sustained traffic enforcement, distracted driving, e-ticket and equipment, cop cards, alert training. Um, they, like I said, they funded the tabletop, the full-scale exercise training, uh, the burn jag grant for, uh, equipment purchases. Talk a little bit about the opioid crisis really quick. Um, as you all know, this has hit New Hampshire, it's hit New England really hard. Laconia is no different. New Hampshire was ranked number two in the nation by, behind West Virginia for the number of opioid-related deaths, relative to population size. Um, we're certainly ranked number one for fentanyl-related deaths. Uh, fentanyl is an opiate that's fifty to a hundred times stronger than heroin. And, uh, now we see a lot of car fentanyl, which is an opiate that was actually started out as an elephant tranquilizer that's a hundred times stronger than fentanyl. Uh, this is a very real, this is a very dangerous drug and certainly it's a, not only a risk to the users that are using this stuff because they don't know the potency or if this stuff is even in the, the heroin that they're shooting up and the risk that it, it can be to them to, to die, but it's also a risk for our respondent officers as they respond to this stuff because this stuff can touch your skin and you can overdose that quickly. Um, very, very dangerous stuff. Um, so the effects of the opioid crisis here in Laconia. For this year, year-to-date, we've had thirty-nine drug overdoses. We've had four confirmed and once we get the toxicology results back from the medical examiner's office, I expect it to be six overdose deaths year-to-date and, uh, we've taken custody of a hundred and twenty found needles. Just in comparison, for two thousand seventeen, we had a total of a hundred and forty-six drug overdoses, nine overdose deaths and a hundred and eighty-four found needles. So what are we doing about the, the opioid crisis here in Laconia? Uh, we certainly have a, several years ago, I think it was about four years ago, we started this three, three-pronged approach called prevention, enforcement and treatment. Uh, we funded this, or you funded this, uh, position called the PET Officer. Um, as you, as you all are aware, Officer Eric Adams. Um, it was an outreach position specifically targeting overdose victims. Um, so far, he's a, a hundred and sixty-five different clients that are in recovery, sixty days or more. I think that's a, a, a very good achievement. I think it's something that to, to be set for that position and it's a hundred and sixty-five people that might not be here today. Um, if, if that position hadn't been there to reach out to them after they overdosed and said, hey, there's help for you. Let me connect you with some services. Um, Drug Investigations Unit, uh, we have a Drug Detective Unit, um, of, of two officers, two detectives. Um, as of January first, we assigned one of those drug detectives to the New Hampshire Attorney General's Drug Task Force. We used to be part of the New Hampshire Drug Task Force, um, years ago, but we saw the, the detective would be assigned to cases up in Berlin and other parts of the state and we weren't seeing a lot of return on our, on our investment here in Laconia. Um, this, this came as a result of meeting with the commander of the Drug Task Force and the attorney general and, you know, they, they wanted us to, to join this Drug Task Force and we asked, what was the benefit to Laconia? Why, wh- what is going to get us in Laconia itself? Um, we joined the Drug Task Force and I can tell you in the first week, because of the detective that's assigned to that Drug Task Force was working in our drug unit, the knowledge that she had in Laconia, a case that we had made, she brought that to the Drug Task Force. They brought Drug Task Force officers in, they made that case and now it's being prosecuted by the US Attorney Gen- or US Attorney's Office. Um, so those connections, um, are huge. Um, she is, or that detective was working, uh, locally, primarily assigned to Laconia and cases between Laconia and Concord, which is our source of a lot of our drugs. Uh, we have absolute control over that position, but it's definitely a force multiplier and we have the resources of the, uh, Attorney General's Drug Task Force at our disposal anytime we need them. So, um, certainly a, a force multiplier for us and certainly a benefit to Laconia Police Department and the city of Laconia. In addition to that, Uniform Patrol, we do a lot of awareness intervention and street interdiction, um, whether that be on regular street patrol, identifying neighborhoods or certain areas that are, uh, trafficking drugs. Uh, we did a search warrant yesterday or last week and, uh, recovered huge amounts. Um, so this stuff has happened on a daily basis. Some of these cases aren't necessarily ma- making into the newspaper because it's, they're, they're flipping them and moving these things, um, but I can assure you that, that, that stuff is moving forward. Um, I guess I'll let Officer Eric Adams talk a little bit about the HIDA conference.
Welcome, Officer Adams.
Thank you, Mayor, Counselors and City Manager. Um, so my name is Eric Adams, I'm Police Officer Laconia. I've been with the department since, uh, two thousand and twelve. Uh, we started the, uh, PET program in September of two thousand and fourteen. Uh, the, um, basis behind that was to try and, um, help with some outreach for individuals that are struggling with substance use disorders uh, and mental health disorders. So, um, basically, uh, I started, um, from scratch, not really knowing what we wanted to do and how we were going to do it and what resources we had here in Laconia. Uh, and I can tell you, uh, as time has gone on, um, you know, three and a half years into it now, where, uh, we have a lot more resources in this community than I think we've had in a number of years. I, uh, my, my portion of, uh, of this, um, whole thing within the city is, uh, really identifying those that are struggling. Uh, I get referrals from throughout the city. It could be from the hospital, it could be from the recovery center. Uh, it could be from families that are struggling. Uh, and so basically, uh, I'll sit down with the individual, um, and, uh, offer up support, help them find resources uh, to, um, to get them on that path to recovery. Uh, so to date, uh, I've, I have, uh, just over a hundred and sixty-five clients that I have worked with that are in, uh, recovery, uh, as of, uh, with sixty days or more. Um, I have several clients that, um, I, I utilize, uh, on a regular basis uh, to help, uh, with that peer-to-peer recovery. Um, and so I've connected with, uh, just over two hundred and forty, uh, total individuals within this community. Um, and so that ratio works out, uh, very well for us. I think the program is showing, uh, great strides. Uh, one of the things that I did want to point out is, um, we did have an increase in overdoses in two thousand and seventeen. Uh, but after doing all the calculations and doing all the work, uh, to try and identify this, um, we saw a reduction to, uh, where we're at about eight to nine and a half percent uh, of actual recidivism on individuals that are overdosing, uh, more than once. Uh, so that's kind of twofold. One, that's great news. Uh, we've, uh, really kind of worked with individuals so that they're not overdosing multiple times. Uh, but on the other hand, it's identifying, uh, individuals that were kind of just going about their business uh, and, you know, they'll get, uh, a bad batch and they overdose. Uh, so, you know, in, in reviewing all those, we identified that, um, we have very little contact with them. They're functioning, they have jobs, families, uh, and so we, we really try to work with those uh, individuals to kind of get them back on a, on a path of recovery. Um, and, you know, what I've found is for quite a few of the, the individuals that we've had little contact with and that we've, we've really started to work with them, um, is that they are, um, they identified that, you know, they, they do have, um, a substance use disorder, which they're kind of functioning every day and they're kind of living their life and not really understanding, you know, you know, I can use a little here, I can use a little there. Um, but, uh, you know, when, when we sit down, when we talk to them, we really identify that, uh, they, um, they really are wanting the help. Um, so, uh, just to give you a background, kind of what I've been doing since the last time I presented to, uh, most of the council here. Um, I sit on, uh, several boards, uh, one being, uh, navigating recovery um, of Lake Region, which is right here in Main Street, Laconia. Uh, another board is Stand Up Laconia. Um, and then I also sit on, uh, a board, uh, it's just called New Futures. Uh, and so they work on policy, uh, at the state level on substance use, mental health, whole health, um, and really trying to identify what's, what is going to be beneficial for the citizens of this city, uh, as well as the state. Um, and having a law enforcement officer on that board has really helped identify, you know, the struggles that we're seeing with marijuana legalization, D-CRIM, um, you know, all those types of things that, that really are coming down the pipe. Uh, so the, um, we were invited, uh, in February of this year, uh, the chief and I to go down and speak at the HIDA conference, uh, in Washington DC. This is the National, uh, HIDA Conference. So you had, um, so HIDA is, uh, the High Intensity Drug Trafficking Agency. Uh, they are founded out of, um, the DEA. And so, uh, our region is not, uh, a HIDA region. Uh, and so for them to identify this program and to, uh, ask us to come speak at their national conference, uh, was a really big deal. Um, we spoke in front of individuals from all over the country. Uh, and so we got really good feedback on it. Um, I've been in contact with agencies, uh, as far as California. Um, and, uh, they want to know more about the program, how they can implement it in their, in their HIDA programs. about the program, how they can implement it in their, in their HIDA programs. So, you know, as far as, you know, what we're seeing, I, I will tell you, the overdoses, it's, it's, it's kind of like up and down. And, you know, with what's coming into the city, what's being trafficked, we're seeing a lot more fentanyl than we are just straight heroin, and we've had some incidents where car fentanyl has been identified as well. So, it's, it's just that matter of someone that's using heroin, and now it's, it's fentanyl, their body's not used to that transition, and they overdose. So, where I'm working, you know, with a lot of different organizations in the city, and especially, you know, Public Health Network, the hospital, schools, to really identify how we can better serve the community. Do you have any questions?
Questions for Officer Adams? One I had, and maybe Counselor Hosmer, I know he's been very involved with the Navigating Recovery Program. I read somewhere, I think over the weekend, that that organization has three-hundred-and-forty-something members, clients, whatever they call them. That seemed to be an astounding number to me. Are those...
Yeah.
Are those all Laconia residents?
No. So, Navigating Recovery actually covers the whole Lake Region area. And, you know, what we're, what we're identifying is that we have individuals that, the whole thing bases on stigma. So, where...
Based on what?
Stigma. So, for, you know, individuals that are suffering from mental health disorders, substance use disorders, so, the, there's a huge recovery movement within the state, which is allowing individuals to feel more comfortable, to come out and talk about addiction, you know, their struggles. You know, and I've said it before, a lot of the clients that I work with are victims of sexual assaults, severe childhood traumas, and, you know, parents that, you know, have grown up, and that's kind of their norm as they're growing up, and that's kind of what they know. So, really working with individuals and trying to reduce that stigma, so that they're feeling more comfortable to be able to come out and talk and, and really seek help. Yeah, that, that definitely is a number that I would say is pretty accurate. We have grown severely, which is, to be honest with you, that's a great thing, that's more individuals that are willing to come out and really work on their recovery.
Anyone else? Counselor Hamel?
How many, how many individuals, I don't, I don't know if I could say make it through your program, or, how many do you find that go back to using, you know, amongst the ones you're treating?
Yeah, so, I've had, it's, it's very low, it's probably only about twelve to probably eighteen percent. And, so, I follow them through roughly about a year. So, when I, I, I stay in contact with them for at least, at least sixty days. And then, after that, once they've established their recovery, that's still very early on. So, making sure that they, you know, they have a full-time job, they're contributing back to society, they're following up with their counselors, they're following up with their recovery coaches, and making sure that they're, they're working with their, their own families to mend those, those issues that have been going on. I follow them, I keep in contact through, you know, text message, that's, that's usually by far the largest communication, way of communication that I have. I, I make sure that, you know, eight, ten months into it, they're really established.
Counselor Lutman?
In terms of treatment programs and the ability to get people in, what's that like four years ago compared to today?
It's, it's done a complete one-eighty. I mean, there is still a lot of, there, there are still issues with wait times, things like that, but, you have places like Horizons, they have started their intraprograms. So, basically, you can, while you're waiting to get into treatment at Horizons, you can actually go there and start doing group counseling. And, so, it gives that individual an opportunity to actually start meeting with a counselor and start working on, on their, their recovery. Statewide, it's actually, it's actually a little bit better than it has been. We had a little bit of an issue when Serenity Place down in Manchester went out, but Manchester was able to actually have different organizations come in and really kind of help out and divvy up all their clients. I've had, I think the, the average wait time for me in the last probably five or six months has only been a week, week, maybe ten days. So, it's just a matter of really finding out, you know, where I can get someone in, and is it going to be a fit for them, because I don't want them to go there and then walk away, you know, because it just wasn't, it didn't fit with them, you know? So, it's really about learning their personalities and, you know, their backstory to really understand where they're at.
Okay, thank you, Officer.
Thank you.
Chief?
So, just as a side note, last night, Eric and Brian Keys from the Fire Department were honored at the Lake Region EMS Awards Banquet, and they received the Dr. Paul Rassikoff Award for their work in, in this stuff, so, good, good work. So, some new, new community policing initiatives that we'll be working on. This one is currently underway at the Laconia Middle School. It's called the Junior Citizen Police Academy. It's a cooperative initial initiative with the school system to build trust with the youth. It's a ten-week program that's conducted this spring, and it was done as a pilot program, it's going to be done again this summer when kids are out of school, as part of the summer's youth activities. I mean, that was grant-funded by a grant that came up through the school. We'll be creating a Neighborhood Watch Program, along with the anonymous crime line and tip four-one-one that I had talked about. We currently do a community survey on the back of the blue cards that officers hand to all crime victims. We're going to be changing that a little bit, and doing another one that has what's called a QR code. It's that little funny thing on the back of the card that's on the screen, but it's, if you scan that with your smartphone, it'll bring you to the survey, and you can do it right on your phone. It's a really quick, five-question survey that we might get some more, some more results out of. The blue cards have kind of lived their life, and we don't, we typically get like five or six results of those a month, so, we're looking at increasing that, making that a little bit more user-friendly. In addition to that, we're looking at a program called LEAD. It's law enforcement against drugs. This is a nationwide program, it was born out of New Jersey, and something that we're looking at as a program that we can implement in the middle school. I'm a firm believer that part of this, this problem with heroin, the education is a key component in this stuff, so if we can prevent people from trying this and becoming addicted in the first place, then we should put a lot more effort into that. And, I truly think that kids in the middle school are at that susceptible age, whether it's sixth, seventh, or eighth grade, and by establishing a, a strong program in that school that's reinforced over several years, maybe we can prevent this from, from them ever trying, you know, substance abuse. So, this is a program that is taught by law enforcement, but it's taught in collaboration with the school staff. It's multifaceted, certainly a program that we're looking at implementing there and maybe replacing the DARE program entirely with, so.
Does that program go right up through the high school?
It actually is, it has curriculum right through first grade, right through twelfth grade. So, it is a program that's very expandable or, or reducible to, depending on what you're...
Is that here now, at the high school?
It is not, we don't do anything at the high school. This is a program that is very expandable, that we could, you know, really hit it hard in the, the middle school, and we could expand it into the high school as well. And, I really think the education part of this stuff is, is where we need to put a lot of emphasis.
I think that needs to continue through the high school.
I agree. I absolutely agree. And, that's all I have.
Counselor Hayes has a question?
Yes. So, we need a resource officer at the middle school.
That would certainly be my, my desire.
Can you estimate the cost?
I can, I can get you a cost.
Okay.
I certainly can get you a cost.
You know, the, the cost on those res, resource officers at the schools, shouldn't the school pay, help pay for some of that? I mean, lots of times, they request that.
Yeah, I mean, certainly in some jurisdictions, that is how it's done, it's funded completely by them, or it's funded partially by both. I can tell you, our school resource officer that's at the high school is completely funded by us, so, he's taken off the street from September to June, and he's in the high school.
That should be negotiated with the school, I think, you know, between you and the school or whoever, because they should pay far part of that.
I can certainly tell you, I've had many conversations with the principal at the middle school, and she's very much in favor of having a school resource officer there. And, I can tell you, as far as school safety and stuff that's coming out of that governor's task force, that's one of the items that's being looked at, whether it's school resource officers or some type of school marshal program or something like that. But, certainly, there's many aspects of having a school resource officer, not only from the safety aspect of it, but also the relationship building, you know, the, the drug education programs, that kind of stuff is, is certainly beneficial, and, in my opinion, very needed where, where stuff should be put, so.
Why at the middle school?
We have one at the high school.
Sorry?
We, we currently have our school resource officer at the high school.
I know, but my, my question is philosophical, I guess. We have three elementary schools, why the middle school as opposed to the elementary schools?
I, I mean, I personally think that the middle school is that turning point in a, in a kid's life. I don't think you see a whole lot of that at the elementary school level. I mean, our officers that work the different areas of the, of the city, they, they're divided into sectors, they're all assigned in elementary school currently, and they're responsible for, for stopping at that school, going in there, in there, talking to them. They did, recently, they did, I think it was Pop with a Cop, they went and had popsicles at the elementary school. This Friday, we're doing the barbecue at the Woodland Heights, so we have that interaction now, but I really think that the middle school level is where kids are really susceptible. They're very susceptible to the peer pressure, to the drug influence, to the, the violence aspect, the bullying aspect, and that's, that's where we definitely put a school resource officer.
So, you're talking more education than you are security, building security here? In terms of confronting an active shooter or something like that?
Yeah, I mean, we, we certainly can't predict where an active shooter event would happen, whether it's the middle school, the high school, an elementary school, a commercial building, we, we can't predict that, but a side benefit to that is the security aspect of having an armed school resource officer at the school.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for...
Thank you.
All right, we thank you very much for coming tonight, all of you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Widdam, and we didn't get to say hello to Captain Grayton there and Lieutenant Swett, but welcome to you two as well. Thank you all for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Fire Department.
Good evening.
Chief Erickson, and I thought I saw Chief Beatty here as well. Yes, welcome.
So, good evening, everybody, and thank you for the opportunity to present the operating budget. All of you were given this handout, I believe, two weeks ago, to kind of give you a lot of information about the Fire Department, so that we didn't have to go into all that detail tonight. But, before we do start with my presentation, I did just want to go over the numbers in the budget specifically, and, just move this forward just a here. So, looking at the salary side of the budget, the increase to two million, one ninety-eight is essentially due to contract increases...
What specific page, Chief?
Fifty-eight, I'm sorry, fifty-eight. Those are due to step increases or any other contract increases.
He's in our general fund budget, so the green budget book, page fifty-eight.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, yeah, I didn't put that in the handout. Everybody all set? Nope, okay, I'll wait. So, again, the two-point-one-nine-eight million for salaries is up from two-point-one-one-six, and those are for steps or any contact, contractual agreements in place. I had asked for fifty-four thousand in personal coverage, and the manager has reduced that to forty-five thousand. I had asked for seventy thousand in extra duty, and the manager has reduced that to sixty thousand. I had asked for sixty-one thousand in sick and injury, and he has reduced that to forty-five. Holiday pay is one-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand I had asked for, and that's been reduced to one-hundred-and-twenty. And then, vacation coverage was one-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand, and that's been reduced by a hun, to a hundred-and-five thousand. The other line items, contractual EMT incentive is what, I'm sorry, it's not just EMT, it's contractual incentives for college degrees and EMT advanced, or any other special education that the firefighters have. The other big item is the health insurance has gone from five-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand to six-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand. Did I just lose that? And then, retirement has gone from seven-hundred-and-eighty-thousand to eight-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand, and basically, that is just the changes in the increase in the salary lines. So, just want to point out that the overtime budget is about five percent of the total budget, and on a statewide average, for cities of our size, most places average between eight and twelve percent of their operating budget is attributed to overtime. So, I know overtime is always an issue, but did want to point out that it is actually relatively low overtime in comparison to the total budget. On the expense side, am I just too loud for this? Okay, how about if I move it away a little?
So, is overtime, extra duty coverage?
There is no overtime per se, it's, it's five different line items that add up to what we generally call overtime.
What would those line items be then?
Personnel coverage, extra duty, sick and injury, and vacation. It's always been that way. It's just always been separated that way. So, where it says personnel coverage, that would be the overtime needed to cover personal days for the thirty-six employees. And, extra duty, extra duty is overtime, pretty much everything but time off, so fires, training, Fourth of July, extra staffing for Fourth of July, storms, if we bring extra people in for storms. The bulk of the extra duty is attributed to emergency recalls for fires.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. So, the budget itself, initially, I had asked for four additional full-time firefighters, and we had, I proposed that we go to ten firefighters, and we maintain nine-man staffing, and obviously, with the tax cap, and, you know, the manager said no to that, so this budget was submitted, and this is where we stand right now. On the expense side, I'd just point out, you know, health, excuse me, electricity went up to thirty-six thousand, it's just the average cost to run the two facilities. We had an increase in the fire alarm maintenance, mostly to try and cover the work that keeps going on that no one seems to tell us about ahead of time. You know, Fairpoint came in and moved every pole in the city, and then said, "Oh, you're going to move all your fire alarm wire," and I said, "Well, I don't have any money to do it." So, we've been trying to find money to do it, and now we've got to do Court Street, so that's why that budget is going up, so we can replace wire as needed or pay the people to do the work. The other item I wanted to point out was outside contracts went up to seventeen thousand, and most of that has to do with the new station, things that I didn't think about when we built the new station, such as we need a contract with an elevator company. We have other contracts for air equipment, aerial testing, but there's a couple items that came along with the new station that just weren't budgeted, and as an example, the elevator contract drives me crazy, because we don't need an elevator, but we had to put one in, as Counselor Hamel knows. So, on the expense side, basically, it's pretty much a slight increase from three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand to three-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand, so the total budget went up five percent over current budget. Are there any questions on the individual line items? So, with that...
So, this, this, just, I don't know, I'm asking you or the city manager here, but this four-point-six million dollars...
Yes.
That's, this page is now, oh, never mind, it's down at the bottom there, okay. I was looking at the hospital.
The hospital budget is, it's set up as a revolving fund, and it wasn't, it's not submitted yet.
What we've done with what the positions that LRG Healthcare had funded for the ambulance, they had funded the four, four highest paid paramedics. And a deputy EMS position and the expenses of operating the ambulance. Knowing that in putting this budget together, it overlapped with the city going out for an RFP and we don't have a firm recommendation for you at this moment in conjunction with this budget presentation. What we did is we put that into a, a special revenue account on page one sixty-four. So on page one sixty-four of your budget book, you will see, um, wait for everybody to get there. So with, with the hospital in essence paying for those positions and those costs of our ambulance service. And, and by the way, that didn't cover the whole ambulance service. If you think about it, covering four positions, you know, that covers a portion of one ambulance. And there's plenty of times in the city where we operate a second or a third ambulance as well. The hospital was also, um, responsible for the billing and the collection portion of it. So there was a revenue component that they received to offset the expense component. So if you look up there at the top under revenues, we'd be, we'd be projecting, uh, to bring in just over a million dollars in revenue. And if those positions I spoke of, including the deputy EMS came in-house, we think there'd be some opportunity for classes to be held. At the Laconia Fire Station within the department and some of the training that the hospital paid for, for other communities in their catchment area. We could now do in-house, um, here and bill out for those. So we looked at total revenue of a million twenty-five thousand. You can see the salary items that kind of mirror what was in the, uh, the general fund budget numbers that the chief just presented. Running down to retirement costs, health insurance, overtime, et cetera. So you could see, um, what I refer to as the, the personnel costs. The top of the, the page runs around seven hundred thousand, six hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars there. You can see the other items that the, that the hospital was funding again in conjunction with doing the billing and receiving the revenue. Um, our items like medical supplies, the cost of, of billing, we, if we keep the, uh, ambulance with the fire department. We will go and be going to an outside billing agency who will bill and collect and go after those dollars for us. So that's a percentage. Of, uh, of receivables that they charge, so it's a percent of what they collect. Other items like gas, um, exam, physical exams and training for these particular individuals, equipment, including. Uh, replacing defibrillators and monitors that are in the ambulance. And you can also see in here that we had a, uh, the last item before we tallied it up at three hundred and twenty-nine thousand. Was a seventy-five thousand dollar internal service expense. Twenty-five thousand of that was the actual cost of vehicle maintenance, routine maintenance, um, labor costs for mechanics, that type of stuff. Fifty thousand of that would be targeted towards a, um, replacement program for an ambulance every four or five years as needed. So fifty thousand dollars going away, uh, for those counselors who are new with us, um, this being your first budget. We also have within the budget book what we refer to as an internal service fund. It's an accounting, uh, place where we put all city vehicles roll through there. So all the expenses for maintenance parts. Purchases all run through an internal service fund and each department feeds into that internal service fund. Based on the number of vehicles and the usage and that type of stuff. So that's where we run all vehicles. So this was set up as a special revenue, um, to be, to be break even. So these positions, while in this budget book. Are supported by the revenue projected to be collected by billables on the ambulance for those positions.
So our budget for the fire department as proposed by this budget is really the total on pages fifty-eight and one sixty-four.
If you roll in all of the cost of the ambulance and staffing.
Five point seven million dollars in our own numbers.
And again, this is there, subject to, you know, future discussions at the council level and, uh, depending where we may go with this or may not go with this, we can make adjustments.
Just one question, Scott. Did you say this is actual money received of the billing revenues, not necessarily what's been billed? This is just what, this is net?
We, we've looked at the history of what the hospitals collected over the past several years and knowing the reimbursement or our payer mix of, of what's federally paid. What's private insurance paid, those types of things, um, with some adjustments to rates that the council made, uh, last fall, I believe. And with a collecting, collection company that we think is going to be, um, a little bit more persistent in the collection. Uh, as we all know, the hospital is going through some significant changes and this may not be as high a priority as it would for a company that does this for a living. And the company we're talking to has a very, uh, strong success, um. Rating, you will, of, of how they work in the communities. They're not strong-arming, they're not going after folks. There's payment schedules. There's folks, um, who can be discounted who don't have the ability to pay for whatever reason. So, um, th- they're a very reputable company that goes after it in the proper way. And we feel that that's a reasonable amount of collection based on past numbers and we, we have no expectation that we collect every dollar that we bill.
Thank you. Is that company on board now?
They are ready to be on board. We have not, we, we have in essence awarded them the contract if we choose to keep the service in-house. So we've had conversations, um, with their bid proposal. We vetted it. We know that they're a quality company. But we are not bound to them. If, if we go a different direction, uh, there is no relationship with this company.
I thought that, um, I thought that one of the reasons, um, LRGH was cutting out of this contract was because they were losing money.
Part of the reason that LRGH was not making money on the ambulance was they would focus their collections on the patient inside the emergency room. Versus the delivery of the patient to the emergency room.
So you say it was, it was their collection practice?
They were.
That resulted in a red line?
On this particular part of the hospital operation, yeah. They were only doing about fifty-two percent collections on the ambulance billables.
We think towards the end of the contract that we're wrapping up, if you looked at it on an annual basis, probably the subsidy of what the hospital was not collecting in revenue. Versus what they were paying out for positions that have out and, and operating expenses that have outlined here, probably was in the area of a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We think with some simple improvements in the collection, uh, part of it specifically, that we can close that gap very quickly.
So you, you think that we can do it in-house and pay for it with the revenues from, uh, the service itself?
That's what page one sixty-four is saying.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
And again, I want to clarify though, that this is for four paramedic positions and a deputy EMS. So if you just look at the, you know, the, the simple math to it, that's, you know, that's. Four, four and a half days of coverage of one ambulance. And we do operate the ambulance seven days a week. And sometimes a second and a third ambulance. So I, I just want to be clear that the hospital was not subsidizing. The entire operations of everything ambulance related. We, we appreciated the relationship. I'm not knocking it, but it's not, it's not a hundred percent coverage of all of our medical services that we deliver.
They weren't paying for the emergency services out of the receipts for the ambulance runs. Not even close.
Is this budget, is your budget and this budget just gonna fund four paramedics and one EMS and one ambulance? Is that what you're saying?
That's what it's done right now. It has those same positions in there and all of the expense of supplies, vehicle maintenance and vehicle replacement. Because that's kind of the model we've been working under right now. I'm not saying that's the model that we would work under. Going forward in future years, once we get a little bit more time of the business end of it under our belt.
We would continue to provide as two to three ambulances as needed utilizing the firefighting force like we've been doing for the last seventeen years that I've been doing this.
So that's included in your budget request?
Correct. It's always been that the city really funded probably three quarters of the EMS operation. Back when the hospital started doing this in nineteen ninety-seven, we only staffed one ambulance. So back then, it was a fifty-fifty split. But as the city kept increasing in call volume and the workload, we started picking up more and more of the, uh, the work and the cost.
Counselor Lippman.
So, so we would have.
Apparently Counselor Valens still has the floor.
I, that was my impression all along.
I should know better.
So just so I'm clear, what I think you're saying is that the budget that you, um, presented on page fifty-eight.
Yes.
Would, and the additional, um, e- for, for paramedics and EMS. Would adequately take care of our ambulance needs in the city of Laconia.
It would be exactly the way we've been doing it for the last fifteen years, no change.
Okay. No smoking guns, no smoking meth.
No, it's the, the same quality service, six-minute response time, two to three ambulances, depending on the call volume. It would be the exact same service we're doing today that we've been doing again for the last seventeen years that I've been here.
That's what I, and now I yield the floor.
Counselor Lippman, so I have a couple of questions on the, um, I heard the manager correctly. Said this, on page one sixty-four is four and a half days of coverage.
Well, it's four full-time paramedics. So you figure if they're each working, you know, two twenty-four shifts, you know, that would take care of Monday, Tuesday and then Wednesday, Thursday. And you've got the value of a deputy EMS in there as well. So it's, it's probably covering, you know, somewhere around four and a half days.
Basically one person every day of the week.
Of the frontline ambulance.
When you look at the work schedule of the firefighters' work. The hospital's always provided one paramedic every day of the week.
I, I guess I'm trying to, um, so this, this just provides one and we typically staff.
It's two people to each ambulance.
So we, we staff nine people right now is full strength on a platoon shift. And out of there, we're operating two and sometimes three ambulances. So with what the hospital has been providing is basically covering, um, more than half of the coverage of just the frontline ambulance.
And over the years, they've purchased the ambulances, which they have agreed to give them to us.
And the, the dollar value that's on page one sixty-four, the top line is net revenues gross?
That's net.
That'd be net, that'd be collect, that's what we anticipate collecting. We think the billables were somewhere around a million.
One point five, one point six. Just looking at the, the growth of the patient volume, the, the billables, the receivables going back to two thousand and, uh. I, I think I went back to two thousand nine. I, I can't really remember exactly, but we're looking at about a seven to eight percent growth, uh, each year in billables, receivables. And call volume. So we took all those factors and used that to come up with this number.
Go ahead, James. So I think it'd be helpful to under, to have sort of a pro forma of the ambulance service. Put together in terms of what we need, what, what it really looks like, because I think in terms of looking at other options, I think it helps us evaluate. Those options as terms of what's being proposed to us.
We can do that.
So if the budget that is submitted between the fire budget and the ambulance budget, if that were to be approved. We would remain exactly as we are right now, providing the same quality service that we've been doing. And, and again, this is my seventeenth budget. It's seventeen years that we've been doing it.
I get, I get this, I get it how it all comes together. I guess in terms of, if we're looking at other proposals. I think it's important to understand what the current situation really costs. So you look at that against what is being proposed alternatively.
Just keep in mind, when you look at anything proposed, on the fire side or on the EMS side, everybody in the Laconia Fire Department, with the exception of me, is cross-trained. I can still do some basic stuff, but, um, everybody's either advanced or a paramedic and they're a firefighter. So that's the distinct advantage. They can drive a fire truck and go to a fire. They can take an ambulance and go to a fire. They can drive a fire truck and go to a medical call. They can drive back in a ladder truck and go get an ambulance. They can do any of those functions. And that's one of the great savings of using your fire department. You're taking advantage of an existing workforce and letting them do multiple tasks.
I guess another way of saying what I'm trying to get at maybe is if the billing revenues are, it's only, the patient volume's the patient volume.
Correct.
It doesn't get generated by the fire department, doesn't get generated by somebody else. This is roughly a revenue stream that's available to support, um, the service. That's, I guess, what I'm trying to get at. And so I guess if, if a million is available to support the ambulance service. That's all I'm trying to understand is, is, uh.
Well, I think what they're saying is, is that the expenses that the hospital has been picking up, which is on page one sixty-four, correct?
Ballpark numbers.
Those are easily predictable because we know what they've been. The revenue is an estimate.
I guess my point is the, is a, you can, you can come up with a different number. You can move the number up to two million or, or, uh, take it down by five hundred thousand or whatever you want to do based on, um, billing collections. There's only so many patients to transport. And so that, in terms of looking at the realism of any proposal we have. Looking at what is the billing revenue base versus what the expense base is to, to cover that, you know, um. The council's trying to do due diligence on, on what, um, are the options. And we need to understand, you know, what, um, the base is of comparison. So if someone comes in and says they can do everything, um, on the positive side, so they can do everything that, that we're doing now. And provide three times the number of people that we're providing on page one sixty-four, that doesn't seem real. There's got to be something else to it. So that's, I think, why we need to be able to look at what the full picture is here.
So if, if you, this number in here of one million, um, ten thousand dollars. Do we know what the actual was last fiscal year?
I haven't.
We think this last calendar year is where we have most of the most recent data from is two thousand and seventeen. We think that's low through some of the challenges the hospital's been going through. So we think the data coming from the two years prior to that is more realistic.
They collected eight hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars in their fiscal year, uh, twenty sixteen.
Sixteen or seventeen?
Their fiscal ye- tw- twenty sixteen. So.
Eight hundred and sixty-four thousand.
Eight hundred and sixty-four.
That was their net.
Yes. They billed out.
The gross billings were that year?
One point five, one point four million dollars. And again, they have about a fifty-two percent collection rate. One of the, as an example, if you walked into the hospital right now and showed your insurance card and you had a five hundred dollar copay, you'd give them your Discover card. You bring them in in an ambulance, they don't ask for that, they don't go after it. That's just one area where we know that, you know, they're not collecting that money. If you had a twenty dollar copay, they don't ask the patient for that if it comes in on the ambulance, but if you walk in the side door, they do. Thank you, Don. Yeah, it was one point four four seven million was billed and eight hundred and tw- uh, eight hundred and twenty-five thousand was collected.
And, and we're just speculating that we can do better.
Well, we know that we've just recently increased some rates, so that wasn't factored into that number. We know that the collection percentage of the company that we're talking about. Is a little bit lower than what the hospital was charging, because the hospital was charging the city a collection fee, just like, uh, this one. So that rate is reduced. And again, we think we're going to be a little bit more successful in the collection process. So we don't think going from an eight twenty-four actual. Two years ago to going to a million dollars right now is a stretch. We're trying to be conservative.
I think I, I shouldn't suppose this, but I think. One of the things perhaps that Counselor Lippman is driving at, that puzzle or just an observation is, is that on one sixty-four. The revenue and the expenses are not tied together. The revenues, the expenses won't go down if we only bill eight hundred thousand and they won't go up if we bill two million.
Correct.
They weren't staffing on that basis.
Right.
Right?
But, but again, the hospital was never.
No connection between the two.
But the hospital was never funding one hundred percent of all ambulance-related services. It was affixed people. So for the transition year, we were trying to keep it simple, track it separately. Knowing that our firefighters, as the chief mentioned, are cross-trained.
But I'm just trying to make the point that there's no correlation between revenue and expenses on this page.
Correct. It's pretty much covering five positions and the true hard expenses that go along with ambulance.
I think Counselor Lipp- or Counselor, uh, Hamill.
I guess I just want to kind of feel where Henry is on, on what he's asking then. So what you're asking is, th- this figure here is for, set for one ambulance, basically.
Realistically, it's set for half an ambulance.
Okay. So what you're asking for. Okay, so what you're asking for is, what's the true expense for putting two or three ambulances on a row? Is that what?
Seven million dollars.
Huh?
You could honestly say it's the total fire department budget. It's seven.
That's not helpful, though, to, to evaluating the situation. I think what we.
All right, okay.
What we need to, to have is, to, to be able to, we're going to get a proposal from someone else who says they're going to be able to do something for us, which we hope, if we, if we were to select that, that would be as good or better, right? You know, if, if they're making a representation that they're going to do X, Y, or Z on a million six or two million of revenue, and, you know, they don't have a realistic number, or they have a very realistic number, it's important for us to know what that is.
Well, the additional salary to staff, the other half.
It's, it's the best benchmark is ourselves.
The additional salary to staff the other half of the ambulances is roughly another four hundred thousand dollars, just looking at that top line. But we also staff a second ambulance about five hundred times a year and a third ambulance about three or four hundred times a year.
I think what we're looking for is a number that we can say, if we're going to consider other proposals.
Yeah.
A number that we can say, what, what, what's the impact on your budget not doing all of that stuff? If you just stick to the fire and we do ambulance in, in another, in another fashion.
So in other words, in your five point seven million dollar budget, what he's asking is, what would theoretically go away on your expense side if somebody else did the medical calls?
A small amount of the budget, the money to buy the drugs, repair the ambulances, put money away. I mean, I've argued all along that we need the nine firefighters for fire suppression, we get a great benefit out of the fact that they can do both jobs. And the MRI report even, they even said in their report that we need more firefighters because of fire suppression issues in the city. So if we got rid of the ambulance, I would argue that we still need all those firefighters to deal with all the problems in the city.
So he's saying almost nothing would be cut from the budget.
Right.
Well, that can't be it.
There's a diff- there's a difference between what I'm asking and what you just said, Chief. I'm trying to understand, to, from a history standpoint.
Yeah.
Going way back before the current arrangement was in effect, to my understanding and recollection, the city solicited bids for ambulance service, and they were asked to, to turn over all the revenues plus contribute a million dollars plus at the time.
That was dating back into the eighties, I believe.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, you know, from my perspective, having worked in healthcare in this community for thirty-plus years, the, the quality of billings is less favorable today than it was in the eighties or, or, or early nineties. And I just, when I'm looking at proposals, I want to make sure I'm looking at real proposals that have some grounding in what it really takes to operate it. We know what the revenue base is, and, you know, want to be able to make a fair judgment on it and to kind of say what, you need to help us to.
Several years ago, several years ago, I had written a report to actually Tom Clermont as to what it cost to run the ambulances several years ago. And at that time, it was about, on the, the city's side of the operation, was about one point eight million dollars. And that was literally breaking down, like, twenty percent of the lieutenant's time was supervising EMS versus fire suppression, doing EMS payroll. So I could hopefully find that document. I, I know I saved it, don't know where.
Saved it in the same place I saved all my notes.
Counselor Hamel.
Chief, that paper you just had there, you said the hospital had one point?
One point four four, one point four four seven million dollars in twenty sixteen is what their billables were. Last year, their billables were one million six hundred thousand.
They collected eight hundred.
And they collect eight hundred?
Eight hundred and twenty-five.
So you're saying we're going to collect a million, but there's still going to be six to seven hundred thousand dollars that we're not going to collect?
Yes. You, first of all, about seventy-two percent of everybody that we take to the hospital is federally insured. You can send the biggest, you could bill them ALS two at eighteen hundred dollars. Keep in mind that all our rates almost doubled back in August, when the council approved the new rate increase. But if you have a Medicare, Medicaid patient, you bill them eighteen hundred dollars, Medicaid's paying four hundred, you can't go after any more. And if you do the same thing with, I think I got the two mixed up, Medicare, they only pay a hundred and ninety dollars, and you cannot balance bill, that's the federal law. So we're looking at the sixteen percent commercially insured and the, trying to do the math in my head right now, it's twenty-eight percent of the non-federally insured that we're looking at. But we're also looking at going after all the money that's owed us, which is the company that we looked at, they said if they can do their worst collection rate in New Hampshire, they're looking at a million dollars a year. If they can do their worst collection rate in Laconia that they currently do in the state of New Hampshire, they're looking at a million dollars.
I was, I just had a seminar over, over the week, and it involved, part of it involved Medicare. And we just found out, or maybe you already know, but the new Med- there's new Medicare wording on ambulance transfers. And what they've put in is the word "we may" pay, not that we will, we may pay. And, and actually, in the paragraph, it says that you should look first to take a taxi.
Oh, yeah, they've been.
Or a car.
That's been in effect for years.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's been.
But the word now is "may", so they could refuse that, and then your secondary won't pay, nobody pays.
Looking at our, the way we do our paperwork, as long as we are diligent in doing our proper paperwork, encoding our calls in appropriate manner, such as, you know, what nine-one-one tells us the call is. If they tell us it's an echo level call, we bill it at an advanced level. If we don't do our paperwork and do our own due diligence, we won't collect money. That's our own fault, that's an internal problem in the firehouse, and I've made.
But where, where Medicare's changing the wording.
No, that wording's been in effect for years.
May?
Oh, yeah, they've, they've never guaranteed any payment. You have to do your due diligence. If you make a slight error in how you code a call, it will get rejected. So quality care, quality control is extremely critical to making sure that all our paperwork is done properly.
Okay, Chief, move along. Thank you for indulging.
How do I get this? So, why is it not going anywhere?
It's, it's displaying.
It's not moving up.
I have nothing here. Did it fall asleep? So, real quickly, talk about the core mission of the fire department. It's our job to save lives and property, prevent fires, and prevent injury. And we are also an all-hazard service, we are no longer just.
Out of the green book.
You're out of the green book. The handout, I'm just going to summarize a lot of what's in the handout, hopefully you had the chance to look at that beforehand. But, you know, we do this with quick response, we can get to about eighty percent of everybody in the city of Laconia within six minutes. We do it with a lot of quality training throughout the year, whether it's water rescue, fire suppression, active shooter with the police department, and then we do it with enforcement and education. One of the good components about a busy fire department is we're getting into properties daily, and then we can in turn report that to fire prevention or code enforcement to get these properties cleaned up. Our strategic goal is about five years ago, we did a SWAT analysis, and these strategic goals really haven't changed all that much, some of the smaller objectives have. But we want to improve our incident response reliability and effectiveness. That's always been a major problem we have, is getting the right amount of people to the jobs, especially a fire or a cardiac arrest or a serious car accident. We're always working to get better at what we do. We started the automatic metro aid fifteen years ago, and that has had a huge impact on how we can do our job. Another, enhance firefighter safety through training, staffing, and response. Adequate staffing, consistent staffing is critical to how we do our job. I've always told you the story, it's about a baseball team, and you need to have the same number, number of players out there every time, so you can always do the same plays. And if we don't staff the same number of players, and we say, okay, let's not have a center fielder today, then what happens is left field and right field try to make up the difference, and we tend to lose the game. That's a simple way to look at staffing in a fire department. One of our major goals has been to maintain our low rate of injuries, and I put this for the new council, about five years ago, we were losing a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in salaries and overtime to injuries. And we had one of the worst injury rates in the state, and the council approved hiring four firefighters back in two thousand thirteen, and that has helped tremendously by reducing our injury rate. We've also done a lot of training to reduce our injury rate, we've done a lot of safety work, we've done a lot of act, after-action reviews, and we've done a lot of discipline, and discipline in a good way. You know, one of the best disciplined teams out there is the Patriots, they don't get punished, they just do the job the way they're expected to, and so we push doing the job the right way. When you need help, call for it. Don't try to be, you know, Superman and lift up a patient and hurt yourself, because if you do, we'll take care of you, and then when you come back, I'll take care of you again with some free vacation time. We, we're striving greatly to improve community involvement and community preparedness. We've had great success with the room that we built in the fire station last year, we had a hundred and seventy-five different groups use that room besides the fire department. So that room's become a huge success in the city. By the way, we do not let anybody use that room that normally rents places. This is for little groups of people, like the, the Laconia History Group was using it to work on their initial preparations. Community preparedness is critical to make sure we can do our job. We work closely with the police department, the housing authority, the school department, the Red Cross, the hospital, the department, the community, public health. We work with a lot of different people, so that if something hits the city, we're ready to respond. And then lastly, we've been working to improve the city image. It seems to be a difficult task, it seems like we write a person up, they clean the building, and six months later, we've got to go back and write them up again, and we just experienced this again this week on Winter Street. We have the same frustrating problem, though, where we take people into court, and then it gets tied up in the court system, and we just wait and wait and wait for any work to get done on a property. It just absolutely drives me crazy to see some of these properties in the city, and it's really attributed to absentee landlords. They don't live here, they don't care about here, all they want is their rent. So providing quality safety service is critical. I think we provide one of the best EMS services in the state. We do outstanding emergency planning, as I just told you. We, we have a class-two fire insurance rate, which is one of the best in the state. Nashua is a class-one, there's only a handful of class-twos in the entire state, there's actually only about eight hundred class-twos in the entire country. So with all the work we do with fire suppression, emergency planning, training, and staffing, we make up for that with lower fire insurance premiums, especially commercial properties. We have very good response times to the bulk of the city, and we have good emergency services and community involvement. And a lot of this is attributed to the firefighters. They work hard every day, they're adaptable, they're extremely reliable, they're dependent, they're tenacious, they're tough fighters in many ways. But they don't like to give up, and that's, you can see that when they do their work, whether it's fighting a building fire, or crawling across the ice to pull a kid out of the lake, or working a car accident victim or a cardiac arrest or a drug overdose. It doesn't matter who it is, what the circumstances, they are phenomenal fighters, and they don't give up, and that's one of the reasons we are so successful. Just real quickly, some of the work last year, the transfer station, a fire on Parade Road, a river rescue on Messers Street, talk about all hazards, this is a water leak. On a Sunday morning at twenty-five Union Avenue, a substantial water leak. People were getting displaced, water was coming down from three floors to the third floor, second floor, into the kitchen. This was causing major damage to twenty-five Union Avenue. It had nothing to do with the fire department, but it's what we do. They asked for help, and we went in force and helped restore this building, stop the water leak, fix the damage, get people back into their units within literally hours, instead of having to put these people out probably for days. So that's part of that all hazards approach, we just don't fight fires. Training, this was a Madurgan building, we took great advantage of that building, just doing simulated rescues, the county jail fire, and one of the more serious fires at three o'clock in the morning was on Orange Court. But I'm going to have Chief Biati talk about EMS. Ironically, Chief Biati is the first paramedic ever hired by the city of Laconia in nineteen ninety-seven.
Thank you, good evening. The, the plan that I want to talk about with the EMS isn't to get into the weeds of the operations, but certainly as, we kind of got opened up earlier with questions, if there's anything, I'll be glad to answer that as we go along. Couple of things that I just wanted to talk about with our EMS is, I truly believe that we lead the region in how we operate with our EMS, and we've done that for a long time now. Two of the ways that we do that is how we approach changes in EMS, changes in the job, new skills, new tactics, new procedures, anything that we need to do, we've always taken that on, addressed it, and moved forward with it. The second way, which is a little bit different than the normal EMS, is especially through what Deputy Chief Riley does, who's the deputy of our EMS. A lot of policies that come out of this region are written right in the firehouse, and they go to the region and certainly through us for what we do as well. Three of the big ones that we've worked on over the years and, and have been authored by Deputy Riley, one of them is what we call the STEMI protocol. It's essentially, it's a specific type of heart attack, that the only way you're going to treat it effectively and to have a positive outcome is to be at a catheterization lab, our two closest are Concord and CMC. We either take you from the field, directly going to Concord or to Manchester, or we do transfers out of the hospital to these facilities, and that's a specialty transfer. And again, one of those other things that we built up and were able to do is that all of our paramedics are trained to be able to do that. The second one is a stroke protocol, which is essentially, it's a way for us to notify the hospital earlier of a patient having a stroke. They activate their CAT scan team to be ready to go at a moment's notice for us to come in. And with both of these things, this is all on the reliance of the crews in the field, picking up the phone, calling the doctor in the ER and saying, this is what I got, and this is what we need out of you. We either need to give you us, give us the thumbs up to go to Concord or Manchester, or we need you to get the CAT scan machine in operation. And we get a hundred percent compliance out of them because of the work that they know that they do, the training that they do, and it's, it's been a phenomenal process to see. The third one, which is new, but it's going to be one that's going to probably affect us here soon, is the obstetrics bypass protocol was written by Deputy Riley. More for the Franklin side of the two campuses, because they didn't have a maternity ward, what happens when an ambulance picks up a patient who needs to be at a place that has to have a maternity ward? And that's what this process was written for. With the potential changes that are coming in this area, this is obviously going to fall under us as well, and so these protocols, again, are stuff that we would have to operate under. And when they're coming right out of the firehouse and being written right in there, it's, it, it's a positive for us. The CPR save rate's something we've always talked about. We don't have the current numbers on it, the last time we checked that was, the last time we, we worked on this, we were about twenty-four percent, which is a, it, it's only a quarter, but it's a phenomenal rate when you look at what a cardiac arrest save rate was. Some of our numbers are a little skewed right now, which is why I don't have exact numbers because of the way we would factor in the overdose cardiac arrest versus non, and so those numbers are being worked on, we just don't have the exact numbers. Last year, we transported three hundred and eighty-six, what we would consider to be critical patients, critical patients, so more than one a day of a patient where if we didn't treat them on scene effectively and transport to a definitive care, whether it be LRGH or otherwise, which ninety-eight probably percent of our patients go to LRGH, the patients wouldn't survive. It's something we started tracking a few years ago, those numbers are consistently going up, increasing by ten to fifteen percent a year. So, and that, that's what these, these crews are working on every day. The, I'm going to talk about Narcan, but I would kind of talk about it a little bit more in, in the community involvement, which is the next slide that I'm going to talk about. But we did, we did dose out almost two hundred and fifty doses of Narcan last year in the city. You know, it's, it, it's, it's a high number, but it's a true number, and, you know, it just, it's important that, you know, you saw the presentation that Officer Adams was talking about, and those, you know, our numbers correlate very closely with what they do. We also, another thing that we lead in is that we have, although it's available to most every place in the state, we are one of the few in our region that have what's called bariatric equipment. So for significantly obese patients, it is all required to have specialty equipment for moving and transporting, not only for their safety, but for ours as well. We, we do have that equipment, and it's. Um, we we do have that equipment and it's used, uh, I won't say frequently, but it it is used, I know, probably a couple of times a month. Uh, the the last two pieces on the EMS, uh, one of them I wanna talk about is that the state level of involvement. Um, it's something that we are very active in in the state at this level. Um, two of the boards that Deputy Chief Riley sits on are the Trauma Medical Review Board and the Medical Control Board. Both of those agencies, um, or organizations, they write the policy for what's going on in the state for EMS, for medical um, across the board. And to have a seat at the table and to be as active as we are in that, that really, uh, you know, changes what we do. And uh, and and puts us on the forefront of what we're doing. We're we're yeah, we're on the ground floor of any changes that are coming down and we have a voice at the table. Uh, the other one is the Governor's opioid task force, which I sit on. I've been on that for about almost a year now. Um, we're tasked with uh, presenting a project to the uh, a paper to the governor on the opioid um, problem from the standpoint of prevention moving forward. How do we, how do we stop this going forward, whether it be from uh, prescription issues, um, pharmacy issues where maybe, uh, you know, information for uh, patients, that type of stuff. So that's what we're working on right now. The last thing under the EMS section is uh, the EMS in the warm zone. We have worked very closely and I know Chief Canfield talked about it in his presentation. Um, we've worked very closely with Laconia Police Department on our uh, EMS in the warm zone. Generally, you hear it more as an active shooter policy or or training. Um, we are at um, the department because of the work that that we put in, both in the trainings. Um, at the state level that went through the grant and what we did in-house. Uh, ev- everybody in the fire department is trained at the operational level, which is not many departments in the state that can say that they're a hundred percent at the operational level. We are, um, and it's a continuous, ongoing process of training for this. But uh, we certainly feel that with the equipment that we have and the training that we have, that, you know, we are prepared to handle these situations. Just a couple of pieces on um, community involvement. Um, National Night Out is of course the police organization, um, but we do, we are very active in that. Um, we were part of, we, I wish I had been able to be there that day. Unfortunately, I was out of state. But um, a couple of weeks ago, we were part of a Make-A-Wish um, celebration for a young boy. Um, came down, wanted to be a firefighter for the day. And uh, I gotta give credit to the to the shifts that worked on this. They built a prop that would, that he could burn and put out as a fire. Um, he was sworn into the department, all the, all these great things. And you know, we we always talk about some of the negative things that happen. Um, this was certainly a positive that made these guys really happy and, you know, our firefighters did a great job and I definitely give them props for that. Um, we worked with the um, Lake Street Partnership for Public Health for, I wish there was a better term for this, but basically a Narcan giveaway. Um, w- we worked with them a few different times on this, on these um, distribution for the Narcan so families can have Narcan if they need to. Um, you know, it's a, it it can be debated as to whether or not that's the right thing to do or the wrong thing to do. We don't look at it that way. We say there's an opportunity here and we did it. Um, the first one that we did, I believe was on a Wednesday and Thursday morning, it was used by a parent on um, on their adult child. We saw our work right away. So we're very proud of being part of that and we've done it a few times now and uh, there's nothing scheduled right now, but when it is, again, we would be part of that again as well. Uh, Senior Safety Day through uh, the New Hampshire Fire Marshal's Office and the hospital. Um, puts together a smoke detector giveaway program. Uh, in the last couple of years, we've been to uh, over two hundred homes where we've installed smoke detectors in single-family homes of uh, elderly residents. Who otherwise couldn't do this on their own. It gets us into the homes, gets us talking to them, looking at safety hazards and and that works uh, very well for us. We're very happy to do that. Uh, the last thing I wanna talk about just on this slide is it's listed as limited safe station. Um, we do get patients that were people that walk into the fire station and ask us, you know, can you help us like we see on TV at the safe stations? Well, that's just not feasible for us. We certainly are gonna help them when they walk in. Don't get me wrong. Um, but we don't, i- in most cities, this this doesn't work. Most towns, this isn't gonna work. It works in the two bigger ones at the bottom of the state. That's about as far as it's gonna go really statewide. But what was the alternative for us? And for, I know some of you have been on the board. No, some of you may not know, so I just wanna give you a brief uh, talk about this. Uh, Brian Keyes came to us. He's one of our firefighter paramedics and you heard him earlier. Him and Eric Adams were um, honored last night with an award for their efforts in this. Brian came to us and said, is there an opportunity to do safe station here? It's not really. It's just not going to work. He said, alright, well, I got an alternative. He goes, I'm gonna go out and get to become a recovery coach and I wanna help these people that we go transport all the time. The model of EMS for as long as I've been in and before that has been you treat a patient, you bring him to the hospital, you drop him off, you walk away and and you're done. That's not working with this. And that's not working for our firefighter paramedics and it's it's just not working in general anymore. Brian came to us. He went and got the training on his own. He came back and started a program where he is given a department cellphone or, you know, city issued cellphone. Um, we have business cards made up for him. And when our crews go out and deal with these overdose patients, they may go deal with Officer Adams or they're gonna get a business card from Brian and they're gonna be handed it, the family. Gonna be handed and said, if you need help, call this number and he's gonna direct you where you need to go and get you kind of on that path of recovery. Um, it started, we've been doing that for about a year and a half now. Um, I just talked to Brian tonight. He has sixty-three people that are in long-term recovery based on him receiving these phone calls and working with them. Um, and I know it it's just amazing to listen to him talk sometimes that he'll be on the phone with people for an hour at a time. Just trying to get them convinced not to go left and go buy their drugs, instead go right to to recovery. And they, and they've been doing it. So um, it was a, it's a big change for EMS world to be that proactive. Um, I know Brian and Eric work very closely together. Uh, they both just were invited to go up to Dartmouth Hitchcock a few months ago to talk about this program because it's so unique. So um, those are a few of the things that we've been doing right now. Uh, very proud of everything what we're doing. And uh, hopefully, you know, our plan is to continue doing it this way.
Thank you.
I got a question.
Yep.
Councilor Bounce has a question.
Um, why is it that a limited safe station is not viable here in Laconia or in smaller cities?
Staffing. You you in most places, you know, you look at Manchester, you look at Nashville where they're running Nashville, I think it's six stations. Manchester is eleven or twelve stations. Um, they're generally in the sta- available to be in the station more even though they're busier. Um, we're quite often out. Um, everybody's tied up on calls and it ju- it just wouldn't work. So we don't wanna advertise that way, have people showing up and not getting any help.
Thank you.
The other issue with that also is we don't have anywhere to send them. Our only option is to send them to the emergency room or the jail. Matt, uh, Manchester had that big issue with um, what was that, um, Serenity House where they lost funding for it?
They lost funding.
But Nashville, Manchester have twenty-four hour facilities where they can send people. All of our rehab or all of our counseling centers are basically business hours. So that was a, another issue. So response times, the areas in red are the areas in the city that we can reach within six minutes. We're right now at eighty-three percent of our calls within six minutes was a ver- which is a very good response time. And if you remember when MRI came out, they said that my response time goals was too aggressive. And so we rechanged our ninetieth percentile and again, we're doing eighty-three percent within six minutes. Unfortunately, the areas that are not in red, the response times are regressing. And in your report, I talk about the north end of the city has gone to eight minutes and thirty seconds. The south end is down to about seven minutes and thirty seconds. In those same areas, one of the reasons for the increase in responses, we've gone from about five hundred calls a year to seven hundred and fifty calls a year in those two areas. So um, it doesn't appear to be that much growth up there, but obviously the call volume is increasing up there. Um, part of the issue with a lot of our call volume is the aging population of the city. Um, I think right now our oldest age group is eighty to eighty-five that we deal with on the ambulance. Versus not that long ago, it was fifty to fifty-five. So it's changed dramatically in a very short period of time. And it's not coinciding with the aging either. It's just, uh, so last year, we had ten thousand three hundred and thirty-eight requests for service. That's all-inclusive of emergency and non-emergency work. There were four thousand nine hundred and fourteen incidents. We are one of the busiest fire departments in the state of New Hampshire. We remain the fifteenth by population, but we're actually, I think, right now, the sixth busiest fire department in the state. We did twenty-four hundred and fifty-eight overlapping calls. We did seven thousand three hundred and thirty emergency responses. The firefighters did six hundred and forty-four inspections, which is a pretty consistent number. That's really driven by the economy. Uh, they do oil burners, furnaces, stuff like that, um, and uh, and new homes. The new homes and the oil burners and the furnaces. But as the economy improves, we see these numbers start to go up. And we've noticed that this year, we're seeing an increase in this type of work, which is a good indicator. Forty-nine multifamily inspections. I'd love to see this double a year, but it's uh, I mean, that's basically one a week. We did lose our part-time inspector to an injury. We were using the code enforcement officer at the firehouse five hours a week. And then he was doing thirty-five hours a week at City Hall. Um, so basically Deputy Rappel tried to pick this up. We work very closely with the housing authority. If they have an apartment vacate, they will not allow it to be reused. If it's a um, if it's subsidized by them, they will not allow the apartment to be reused until we inspect it. So that gets us into a lot of apartments. It does get us into a lot of buildings, but it might just be a cursory hallway inspection. Uh, look to see the smoke detectors are in there and working versus going into eight apartments in the whole building. Getting into a whole building is very difficult. Uh, landlords gotta be there. They have to let their tenants know. Um, it's not something you can just show up at eight o'clock and say, we're here to do the inspection. And many landlords just completely ignore the inspection. A hundred and twenty-seven places of assembly. These are our two priorities, uh, three priorities, schools, places of assembly and the multifamily dwellings. This is our biggest risk in the city. The multifamily dwellings are at the most, most serious rick- risks, so that's where we try to get into these. We had a hundred and eighty-seven health inspections for the new counselors. The fire department is your health department. Assistant Chief Biati is your health officer. So we deal with a lot of complaints throughout the year, bedbugs, rodent infestation, broken windows. And uh, those numbers, as people realize they're getting a service and they're actually getting some results, those numbers are starting to increase as well. Uh, serious fires in Laconia since I've been here. Um, the red dots indicate fires in Laconia. Fortunately, when you see the green lines, those are the six-minute response zones. So you can see that the fire stations are located in a pretty good area to get to most of our fires within six minutes. That's one of the reasons why we are so successful, because we can get to a fire in the downtown area within six minutes. And if we have a full crew of six on duty, we're putting those six firefighters into that operation quickly. The wears are coming, Gilpud's coming and Belmont's coming. But um, there is a misconception that fires are down. They are down nationally. I actually went back into the nineteen eighties and went through all the old logbooks because they didn't do computers back then. And the number of building fires back then was between fifty and eighty a year. The number of building fires today is between fifty and eighty a year. What's interesting is back then, they used to do about thirty chimney fires a year. We only do about three or four chimney fires a year. So chimney fires have completely gone away through education and improved stoves. Whereas the number of building fires has actually stayed the same. So we're actually seeing more fires. Um, we do average five hundred reported fires a year in the city. Now that's trash, brush, cars, electrical wires, you name it, that's five hundred reported fires of all different kinds. But we average fifty-eight building fires a year. And in your report, I was showing you about the mutual aid. We do forty automatic aid require uh, mutual aids a year where we call Belmont and Gilpud automatically. And then we do about eighteen significant mutual aids a year where we bring in five to six to seven towns every time. We average twenty-eight residents a year are displaced. That's an extremely high number. We have six residents every year injured. That's an extremely high number. In that survey I gave you on the back, it showed the Fire Care Survey. And um, Fire Cares is the uh, community assessment and response evaluation. This came into play uh, two years ago. And they did ten years' worth of surveys of over forty million fires and they did most of the biggest cities in the state of New Hampshire. And they actually ranked us poor across the board. And on the risk level, they ranked us high across the board because we have a disproportionate number of fires based on the residency. And we have a very high number of injuries based on the residency. And um, a fifty-four percent of all the fires that we have in the city of Laconia are what we consider high-risk properties. So basically, they're either high-rises, commercial buildings, marinas, industrial buildings, multifamily dwellings or medical facilities. Those are the ones that we are concerned about and fifty-four percent are in high-risk properties. Only about thirty percent of all our fires are in single-family homes, which is the complete opposite of the national trend. Nationally, seventy percent of all fires are in single-family homes. W- we, like Parade Road was the last time in November, we had a fire in a single-family home. Multifamily dwellings and commercial properties is where we put our fires out. And that's why we have such a demand for a fire suppression force that's adequate because high-risk properties require more firefighters. Total calls on the top line, we've gone from twenty-six hundred when I got here to four thousand nine hundred last year. And then overlapping calls, we've gone from eight hundred a year to twenty-four hundred and fifty-eight last year. And um, just in the last six years, the top line's increased by about eighty percent and the bottom line's increased by about a hundred percent. So I know the population of the city stays the same. However, the number of housing units in the city has gone up to ten thousand twenty-five. In nineteen seventy, it was about fifty-four hundred homes. Now it's ten, fifty-four hundred living units. Now it's ten thousand twenty-five living units. And yet the population's still the same as it was in nineteen seventy. But we've added five thousand more living units. The people are out there, they call nine oh one and they expect our service and they get our service. They get good service. So we are an extremely efficient fire department. We have thirty-six full-time people, nine on duty a day. We go to three hundred and six calls per thousand residents. We average uh, building fire per capita is three point nine, the highest in the state of New Hampshire. When you look at Portsmouth, Dover, Salem and Derry, they're basically fifty percent bigger. They have a seven million dollar budget. They have fifteen firefighters on duty a day. Their fire per capita is one point three six. They always say there was, you know, this couple of places in New Hampshire that are having fires, Manchester and Laconia and Rochester. And the manager asked me, why is it so bad in Laconia? And you know, I gave him the apartment houses, the absentee landlords, drugs lead to it, mental health issues lead to it, alcoholism leads to it. We have a lot of single-parent families, which mean we have children unsupervised. We have a lot of old homes. That's a definite issue. But we actually looked into it in close detail and we average about um, seventeen percent of every year, we have an os- uh, arson fires. So it averages out to be about nine arson fires a year. And then we have another twelve percent every year that are undetermined with suspicious. And someone says, well, why do we have so many arson problems? It's because of all the other issues I just told you. Unsupervised children, mental health issues, alcoholism, drug, drug problems and crime. A lot of arson is directly attributed to crime. You you do a crime, the easy way to hide it is to light a fire. So when you look at our budget and even though it sounds like a lot of money, we're an extremely efficient fire department. When you look at the cost per home in Laconia at three hundred and forty-three dollars versus five hundred and eighty dollars in those cities and towns. Calls by hour, um, we get busy at eight in the morning and we start to tone down at about eleven o'clock at night. But even from eleven o'clock till seven in the morning, still is about twenty-two to twenty-three percent of all the calls we do, which averages out to about three calls a night. That's the worst possible time for our calls and that's when you s- tend to see um, uh, uh, more severe calls, especially among men that are getting into my age group that don't wanna admit they have a problem and wait till three in the morning to call nine oh one. But um, it's it's astonishing when you look at this chart. This chart hasn't changed all that much over the years. Calls by day of the week, it's been consistent now for seventeen years. There's no busier day than any other day. It gets a little bit busier in the summer, but generally speaking, every day is equally as busy as the other day. You would think Saturdays and Sundays would maybe be busier, but no, it's consistent across the board. Um, issues and concern, we have seen a fifty percent increase in calls since two thousand ten, a hundred and twenty percent increase in overlapping calls. Response times have gone up by fifteen percent in the outline area. We're doing well in the downtown area. One of the reasons we're so good downtown, it's roughly seventy percent of all our calls. In the, the three point eight square miles that is downtown Laconia is roughly uh, seven, seventy-two percent of all our calls. Health and housing issues are increasing. Wears is responding more and more down.
Downtown, Chief, what?
We we look at it from basically uh, the industrial park.
You're considering Old North Main Street downtown?
No, from the industrial park to the bypass to um, uh, Mechanic Street over to uh, Lake Winners Swamp. Um, give me a second, Mr. Mayor. I don't think I handed in here. I don't. But you see the area that is in green in that map or maybe the area in red? That's what we consider the downtown area. And that's roughly seventy percent of all our calls and it's approximately three point eight square miles. And when you look at the ward makeup, that's the majority where the population of the city lives. There's four wards in that, or four pieces of wards in that small area.
You don't literally mean downtown. It's.
Yeah, the district we call down. Yeah, the district we call downtown. Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah. Yeah. Sometimes we forget we use our own little language.
I mean, the south end is downtown as far as you're concerned.
No, the south, no, the south end is not downtown. Stops.
You said as far as the bypass.
Yeah.
South end's inside the bypass.
Yeah, you're right. Yeah. So the wears is coming down to the downtown area far more often than they used to. Their calls are up by 75%. So we're pulling them out of their area far too often to handle multiple calls down here. And then, as I stated earlier, you know, there's a, on a national level, building fires are down. But basically, in the last 40 years, building fires in Laconia haven't changed. They just issued a federal government, just did a report back in April or, I think it might have been March, that since 2010, structure fires are down 19%. And that's not the case in Laconia. We still have a tremendous amount of fires. You know, we try to do what we can to educate people about making their property safe. We give away smoke detectors. We're in these homes. But just a lot of these issues, it's just hard to correct and it's just an issue that I don't see going away.
Counselor Lippman has a question.
Could you square that, earlier in your presentation, you talked about we have a very good fire rating for insurability? Is that because of our response to incidents that minimize damage? Because, kind of square those two issues. One saying we're very good, one saying we're not so good.
So the insurance industry is strictly looking at property loss. They're not looking at contents. They're not looking at renters. They're not looking at health. They're not looking at medical. They're just looking at property. They look at our history. They look at our policies, procedures. They look at our budget. They look at our staffing.
But I just feel property loss is what you're saying drives the insurance piece.
Yeah. What the ISO is really measuring is can you keep this fire from getting to the next-door neighbor's house? They're willing to basically write off property because they know what's going to happen. And they just want to see, can you keep it from, so are you good at keeping it from spreading? The other report is looking at, can you keep it from spreading from this room to this room to this room? Not necessarily from this building to this building. Because when it's spreading from room to room, it's putting people in jeopardy. The ISO, the insurance service organization, does not give people any consideration whatsoever. They're a fire insurance company. They're just worried about fire insurance. As an example, the building the other day, out of 21 people out of there, one of them had renters insurance. That's it. So all the others are probably going to go to the welfare office for assistance or other government organizations for assistance or church groups or whatever. But of these eight apartments, only one was renters insurance. And that's a consistent problem in the city that we advertise and try to educate people on. But $180 a year for renters insurance and they can't afford it. So positives, though, injuries remained at all-time low. And again, we were losing almost $150,000 a year. Our public education efforts are up by 40%. And we're starting to focus, we focus on the elementary school on our side of the job because that's really where we're trying to teach them proper behavior. Now we're starting to focus on senior citizens, trying to teach people about tripping hazards and fire hazards and, you know, making their homes safer. So we've increased that numbers. Everybody, as Chief Biadi mentioned, is trained in the active shooter protocol. And we are significantly farther ahead of the rest of the state in that. And, you know, we save about 150 people last year and every year through our efforts. I don't want to, I'm not going to go into a lot of detail about the drug overdose problem in Laconia, but, you know, all the numbers that you saw Chief Canfield point about. We respond and with the exception of six last year, they were all revived. And now we're basically working through Brian and Eric, trying to get them to become sober and productive. And they're doing a great success. So our inspection, inspections are still high, even with the increased workload. We're still getting our inspections done. They might not always fall according to schedule. We save about $1 million in property every year. Unfortunately, we lose between a million to a million and a half every year. And then our recovery coordinator has a 50% compliance rate, which is a phenomenal number. And it's having a huge impact on the city. I did want to, Brian's numbers, because he's dealing with people completely separate from Eric, and his numbers are almost equal to Eric when it comes to recid, receive, repeat offenders.
It's a tough word.
It is a tough word. It's about 6% to 7% of repeats. It's not the same people that we're dealing with on a daily basis. So any questions?
Questions, councilors? I guess not. It's late and we're tired.
Yeah, appreciate you staying.
Thank you for hanging with us tonight and appreciate you coming and briefing us.
Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
So the only other piece of business we have tonight, councilors, is the need for two non-public sessions. I think we'll take a couple-minute break here if somebody needs to stand up and stretch or use the facilities or whatever while we clear the room. For our audience's sake, I do not anticipate we're going to have two separate non-public sessions. And I do not anticipate any announcements or public action after those non-public sessions. So let's, let's get up and stretch for a minute and then we'll go into non-public.
I'm going to shut that off for you. Okay.
Don, I can call the roll.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.